Littleton City Council took order on September 16th, 2025. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tamar.
Yep.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Reichert.
Here.
Councilmembers Inc. is not with us as of yet. We do have a quorum.
Thanks, all right. Please rise as you're able for the pledge of allegiance. All right, council, man, this seems like, is the speaker really loud? I'm really far back from the mic. Next item is approval of agenda. Everyone's a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? Seeing no changes, it's approved without objection. Item four is scheduled appearances and presentations. We have one scheduled appearance tonight. We have a group that had the project with a child song coming up here. Are they here? Please come to the podium and have at it.
Thank you. My name is Kristen Orlando. I'm the Assistant Director of A Child Song. And we received a arts and cultural grant from the City of Littleton. And I'm here to share our progress and our programs with you. So bear with me. This is, A Child Song was founded 26 years ago in a living room of our Executive Director, Sandy Taylor, and that is my mother as well. So that is the two of us. And we have now expanded 26 years later to reaching over 1,500 clients per month from Longmont all the way to Castle Rock. So Littleton is part of our programming. Here is some examples of our classrooms. We start from birth and go through senior citizens with dementia, memory care, Alzheimer's. Our primary focus is at reaching at-risk clients. So we work with all avenues of our population. Our vision is music changes lives. We have seen firsthand how it started was Sandy Taylor, my mother, and my dad. I am the oldest of eight adopted children. And they have had over 40 foster children in their care throughout my childhood and beyond. And a lot of the foster children and adopted children were drug exposed, trauma-based, and some were told they were never, would walk or talk. And so the early interventions of speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and music were integral into providing them a step for success. And we wanted to provide that for everyone. So it started with an early childhood music and piano lessons in the home I grew up in, and then expanded to offering voice, violin, guitar, drums, bass, ukulele, theater, therapeutic music, interactive metronome therapy, drum circles, and that clinical music piece to really expand on the healing benefits of music. And so our mission is we want to provide music for everyone and not just music education. So there's a little viewpoint there. This is our Littleton students right here. He is singing one of his songs on karaoke. You can see the keyboard with the tabs. So when we do a keyboard unit, I put the tabs on so they can do, that is Still Dre. If you know Dr. Dre and Snoop Dogg, the Still Dre song that ee, 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 ee. I don't, but within five minutes, they can play the chord progression of Still Dre. And it's amazing to see their boost of confidence. And then that opens up their interest and confidence to try something new, like For Elise, or Caro of the Bells is a very popular one. This is our reach currently. We work with foster youth, juvenile offenders, adult offenders, victims, ADD, so intellectual and developmental disabilities. We work with Megan's Place, which is in this area as well. I, we, actually, it's not in this slideshow, but we are going to be working with Heritage High School, starting next week with their SPED program, bringing in drum circles and a keyboard unit with them and their students as well. So we work with Fort Carson and their soldier recovery unit, refugees, I have newcomers, I have unaccompanied refugees that I will be seeing on Thursday, I see every Thursday from Afghanistan, Iraq, Ecuador, El Salvador, Honduras currently. And this is our reach. We work with Denver Public Schools, Sheridan Public Schools, Adams 12, we're in pretty much all of the St. Vrain. And then I've highlighted Littleton, we are with Shiloh House is our primary program right now, working through third through 12 graders. Most of them are, come from trauma-based backgrounds. We have 75 students and staff that participate weekly. We even have the staff join in and learn Still Dre and whatever songs they are. So it's a fun collaboration. And we have performance opportunities throughout the year, which we integrated for the first time in November of 2024. Our main studio is in Thornton. And so we host three recitals a year. And in, within that day, our next one is coming up November 14th or 15th. It's four recitals. We start at nine, 10, like, we go from nine to four. And so we have students from Shiloh being able to be transported and share their talent that they've been working on. I had, in November, I had two students from Shiloh. They were both recently released from Lookout Mountain Detention Center. And they did spoken word. And we found a beat that they liked. I played a loop on the piano and they wrote out, individually wrote out their life story. And there was not a dry eye in the audience of over 100. And for the next month, they were on cloud nine. They're like, miss, when can we do this again? And it was life-changing. For one of them, it was the first positive interaction and affirmation that he's ever received. And he is actually thriving right now. He was released, it was a halfway house program. He was released, but I stay in contact with him. And he is still creating his beats and rhyme and loving it. So, so in addition to just music education, our, we're not a music conservatory. They can go elsewhere to do that, but we just want to share the love and the passion and outlet, healthy outlet of music. With that, music is the backdoor to the brain. I've had nonverbal students speak their first word, or sing their first words. I have dementia patients in a catatonic state. They're just sort of there. I play a song from Pink Floyd or Led Zeppelin, and they perk up, and then they are like, oh yeah. It comes back to them and they start bouncing and even reciting lyrics. And so what makes our organization unique and why we appreciate so much is we meet clients where they're at. We come in with a plan. Oftentimes, that plan goes into the shredder. And we adapt and adjust to where the clients are. If it's a very stimulated day, we just adjust and, and hit them, not hit them, hit the drums to where they're at. One of their favorite things is playlists. This young gentleman, Ray, he has Down Syndrome. He tried for four months, or four weeks to get a sound out of a trumpet, and he did. And it's actually online on his, on Revel's website. And he was so proud of himself. And then he is singing Dr. Marvin Sapp at karaoke. Our current programs, like I said, we start from birth, go through senior adults. We do all the instruments except for brass and harp currently. We go into preschool programs, we're in K-12 through the schools and all that. And then, so we celebrate our 25 years. We started in my mom's living room. And then we have our, we're in our third space now because we keep growing and expanding. We never would have imagined we would be where we are at today. And so I am in current talks with Adams County Correctional Facility, which then usually is, becomes an umbrella to all of the other counties with their programs to go into their adult centers and provide music for them. We're going into rehab programs. We're also integrating, I, in addition to music, I was a personal trainer. So I have added a personal or a mind-body, so strength and conditioning component to that. So we're looking to add into that. And the program at Shiloh, they, I had a group of boys just finish their first 5K. So they all received a medal for doing their 5K. So I get to see them for music and mind-body. And we also have worked with Samaritan House and other homeless facilities in the past to bring in programs, celebrate birthdays monthly for the children there and give a little special addition. So we're working on continuing that. The little boy in the right-hand bottom corner, he is nonverbal, but he is singing Rango, the theme song with Johnny Depp, the Rango movie. And those, the boys up on top over is in the Residential Treatment Center for Shiloh. We have a great board. So if that's ever something of interest, we are always expanding our board. It's a very progressive and working board with many opportunities. And, sorry to go, I don't want to read to the audience. And I'm sure you guys will receive a copy of this, a link to this. And then our, this is at one of our recitals, multi, they were all playing I Love Coffee. So would like to thank you for your support. It is truly making an impact. We're preparing, as of last week, preparing for the recital in November. And already, in, at the Littleton School, I have like 20 kids ready to go, like excited to go. I was like, they're not, you're not quite ready yet. We have to prepare and be performance-ready, but they're super excited about the opportunity. So.
Great, thank you. I do like your choice in music, some of the songs.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Yeah.
How are you funded?
So we receive, we're 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We receive SCFD funding, which is our largest granter. And then I also took over, I'm the Assistant Director, I also took over grant writing in May. So cut back on my teaching to start that. So we have, we receive between 25 to 30 grants and sponsorships over the year. So that's a large part of our funding. And then at our main studio, we do have private lessons as well. So we do have, we bring in income in that capacity. And then what we do with our scholarship program and our off-site programs, our outreach programs, we do make them invest to their capacity. We found that if we offer something completely at no cost, the investment is not necessarily there. So we want them to invest to whatever capacity they have. But the large majority is grants and sponsors.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tamar.
Just want to thank you for all the work that you're doing. I mean, the amount of programming you have for the amount of staff I imagine you have is just tremendous. So I just want to commend you and say thank you for being part of our community. If you have the chance, check out our East Community Center. There are a lot of music programs and other support programs that go on through there. There may be space for you. So if you're interested in that, feel free to reach out to us or our staff, and we'd be happy to put you in touch as another potential opportunity to get the word out about your program.
That's great. Yeah, we currently have 13 on staff, and we all wear many hats. I am doing things I never thought in my life I would do.
Yeah, well, kudos to you.
Thank you. East Community Center, you said? Okay, I'll write that down.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next up is proclamations. We have none tonight. Item six is public comment. Public comment period is opportunity for members of our community to comment, express opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. I'll let you know when you get to your three-minute mark. We expect comments to be civil, disruptive, or disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. Counsel is not authorized under open meeting laws to take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. We may refer matters to the city attorney or city manager for a response to that. When you get to the podium, please state your name and your address. We have six people signed up here. We'll go through the list here first. We got Paul Royball.
Okay.
Yep. Please.
Thank you. My name is Paul Royball. I live in the Trailmark community. Right now, the, at Trailmark, there's an under, underdeveloped parcel in Trailmark, seven-acre parcel. It's known as Filing Five. Filing Five is currently zoned for light retail. The developer for Trailmark, Shea, wants to develop Filing Five with 27 single-family homes. The existing comprehensive development plan, CB, CDP, currently has a maximum number of units of 805 units. Currently, Trailmark is built out with 799 units. The original development of Trailmark left, had a less than 1% margin in the build-out. The project engineer for Filing Five has stated in a communication with the Jefferson County Long Range Planning that the City of Littleton recommended the unit cap be 875 units for flexibility. The additional 70 unit cap for the 27 build-out has a margin of over 250%. I oppose the City of Littleton's recommendation of the unit cap of 875 dwelling units, as Trailmark community will be built out after the 27 single-family units are completed. The unit cap should be 826 or 830 units for flexibility or margin. Related to this development, the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement, Chatfield Activity Area, is draft of July 29th this year. Paragraph three of that for section 4.1.1 changes the maximum dwelling units from 805 to 775. And the overall average gross dwelling density of six dwelling units per acre is deleted. I oppose the changes for the maximum dwelling units as previously discussed. I also oppose the deletion of the dwelling density of six dwelling units per acre. It should remain in the Intergovernmental Agreement, Chatfield Activity Area, to be consistent with the nature of the Trailmark community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up, I have, well, I have Richard and Donna Switek.
Suzak.
Suzak. You guys, one person at a time, speak three minutes?
Yeah, we'll be quick. We'll be quick. In terms of, again, we're speaking on the Trailmark development. And, you know, we had some concerns when we saw the order magnitude that the increase in, in a law.
Can you state your names?
Richard Suzak, 9478 West Gibraltar Place.
Donna Suzak, 9478 West Gibraltar Place.
So, so we became concerned when we determined that, you know, we're asking for a significant amount more of dwelling units than are being proposed for the current development. And the only thing that we're thinking is that, you know, there must be some kind of agenda that must be going on that would allow for somebody to place that many additional units without having any land to place all those units on. So what we would like to do is be informed of any potential development or any potential modifications to our intergovernmental agreement so that everybody can be assured that there's nothing going on behind some curtain or some back door. So we're just asking for some transparency so that, you know, if there's something that somebody has in mind, that we should all be notified as to, you know, what that aspect might be.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've seen a number of different developments come forward from Shea, and they've been very open with what they've offered for this undeveloped land. And we've, the latest we had seen was 27 homes. And then we even realized that the Intergovernmental Agreement was for 76. We actually have put together a petition and asked, you know, our neighbors and homeowners to look at this and say, you know, a lot of them say, we don't want anything there. And we say, that's not, that's not fair. You don't own it. So, and we've looked at these, the 27 with an additional street. And everybody that has signed this petition has agreed that we, as a community, would back these, the additional 27 homes. But 76 seemed a little bit excessive, and we don't know why that 76 is being offered forward for the change, for the increase, when 27 would be more than adequate for the, to finish off the, all the land and everything would be developed at Trailmark. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark Harris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council folks. My name is Mark Harris. I'm a resident of District Two. I'm a member of the Board of Rooted in Littleton. That's the group that brought you the charter amendment that you approved a couple of weeks ago. Back on September 2nd, you passed an ordinance putting the charter amendment on the ballot. And after that, Mr. Betsing gave a report. And during that report, he advised that he would be bringing a lawsuit in district court in Arapahoe County to test, or to seek a judicial review, to see if the charter amendment that had been proposed and was on the ballot was constitutional or in any way violative of state law. And Mr. Betsing also said, and assured everyone in the room and listening in on the internet that he was seeking a judicial review. That's it. He didn't want to do anything that would interfere with the citizens of Littleton voting for that charter amendment or against it on November 4th. In a, I believe, a July planning session, I heard counsel, Councilman, Mr. Reichert also expressed those very same concerns and positions, that he didn't want to interfere with anything in the vote on a charter amendment if it made the ballot. And I think even the mayor echoed those statements during a council meeting or during that study session. The lawsuit was filed on September 5th. And I am, I'm a retired lawyer. I have read the statute that is the basis for that lawsuit. It's 29-20-203. And now that I've read it, I have a couple of questions, because I'm a little confused with what your position was about not interfering with the vote and what's in that statute. And I have two questions. First, are you aware there is a provision in that statute that you have used to seek a judicial review that, that allows the judge to toll or stop the election of, that involves the charter amendment, takes the charter amendment off the ballot? Are you aware of that? And second, well, first of all, if you are aware of it, that's, that's completely 100% inconsistent with your prior statements, that you didn't want to interfere with the election. My second question is, will you commit tonight that you will not ask the judge to toll or stop the election involving the charter amendment? And not only will you not ask for that relief, will you, are you against such relief being imposed? I await your response.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And I'll refer your questions to the city attorney for him to respond at his time, not now. Paul Bohm.
Good evening. My name is Paul Bohm. I live at 5657 South Forest Hill Street. I am here to try and motivate city government to move through whatever hoops need to be negotiated to expedite residential friendly permit parking on our street because of Littleton Brewing Company. Parking on Forest Hill Street is still miserable for the residents. Four times we have had cars parked completely or partly across our driveway, making it impossible to get in and out of our driveway, even since the white stripes were showing where the five-foot barrier is supposed to be. Ironically, one of these times was when we returned from public comment last month, there was a car completely across our driveway. Last night, three houses down from us, a car blocked the driveway, so they could not exit to go to work. While at the same time, my wife came home from bell choir practice to find our driveway blocked again. We appreciate the white striping painted beside our driveways to show where the five-foot legal access is. But unfortunately, some people think that delineates a parking space, not a no-parking zone. The city installed a crossing at Littleton Boulevard, because of the brewing company, but is reluctant to move forward with permit parking. I know there is a concern about setting a precedent for future businesses, but the council had over three years of concerns expressed to this council in the planning stages before the brewing company even opened. And they had more than that time to see the impact that Cherry Cricket had on the local residents there. I have discussed with the city manager about pursuing painting yellow paint crosshatches near our driveway so that hopefully people will realize that's a place not to park. And we won't stop calling the Littleton Police Department almost every day to come and write another parking citation. This isn't a desirable solution, but we need something soon to recover a little of the joy we had of coming home and going from our home. Of course, the city could save money and lack the aesthetics of painting on the street by just going forward with permit parking. We are encouraged to hear that the Littleton Police Department has now more than one sound monitor to start using soon. If the officers on duty can have access to them in a timely fashion, time will tell. I thank you for listening to me tonight and hearing our plight again. Please consider moving forward before red tape takes months or years to unfold. I wasn't going to ask this, but I would like, when you have your comments, I'd be interested in knowing how many of you have visited the brewing company. And more importantly, where did you park when you went to the brewing company? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Aaron Roethlisberger. Next up is Erin Roethlisberger. Ms. Roethlisberger, are you going to speak?
You mentioned that maybe my comments might be construed as electioneering and I don't want to cross lines here.
You can always email your comments to council.
Sorry. Okay. All right. My name's Erin Roethlisberger. I live in District Four. I came here tonight because I am frustrated and upset. I'm frustrated and upset by the falsehoods that are circulating in our community. Specifically disheartening is the behavior that I've only ever associated with national politicians where the big money is that seems to be cropping up at this level. And every experience I've had with you all to date is that you are good and honorable people, that you got involved because you wanted to make your community a better place just like I did when I volunteered for the planning commission. So to say I was dismayed is an understatement when I came across a post on Nextdoor by our current council member and mayor candidate, Patrick Driscoll, stating that if you vote "no" on 3A, it means your neighbor can build a fourplex on their property and there cannot be any parking restrictions. This is untrue and you know it, or you should. The easiest way to know that it's untrue is that I'm unable to build a fourplex today. If 3A were to fail, I would still be unable to build a fourplex on my property. So why would you make this claim? Why would you spread this sort of misinformation in your own community? I believe in you, all of you, that you're better than this sort of political gamesmanship. Please don't prove me wrong.
Next up is Pam Chadborn.
I'm Pam Chadborn. I live a block or two from here. First off, we need repeal of the direct election of mayor. It has politicized our city and brought big money here in developers and it's very destructive. So let's get a repeal of the direct election of mayor. Too much to talk about tonight, but let me say I'm skeptical about the Littleton Boulevard subarea plan. We should be doing a revision of the comp plan this year and that's a process that has a fully integrated city, it should be. We should improve the one we have. It has many deficiencies, our first one in several decades. So it needs improvement and we should be doing that. And it would be an integrated city and we would understand how we're going to address the whole city. I pointed out before that there's like nine economic districts and you folks are talking about Main Street and downtown only and that is wrong. Our plan should include the plan for addressing needs in all of those economic districts and all of their infrastructure needs. And to do a Littleton Boulevard subarea plan is a dodge for special interests, in my opinion. So anyway, this, we need, but the Littleton area subarea plan should explicitly mention an option for vehicle-oriented Littleton Boulevard and a parallel path for bike-ped priority. That study should be done. Parking study should be done. And there should be an option for a circulator bus up and down the Littleton Boulevard explicitly in the contract. And it should include a goal of a historic overlay district for mid-century modern. And I'm going to say Geneva Village is part of that. You're going to talk about it maybe next week. Geneva Village is an irreplaceable asset to the city, the city and we, the people, own it. There is no way you should consider selling or losing that property. It is a long-term asset that is irreplaceable. We'll never be able to get it again, especially if you endet us the way you plan to. Geneva Village provides housing for seniors, keeps the mature trees and open space for the intensifying, densifying downtown. It's wildlife habitat close to the South Platte River and it's valuable on the entryway to express our values and we need it for future councils in the city. There's more to say. I can't say that now. I did want to say, please support the Highline Canal tree planting pilot. I'm grateful for the work being done on this. We need it. The crossing at Kayleigh is an extraordinary opportunity. It's one of the two best views on the 72 miles of the Highline Canal. And that should be part of our planning, is making that educational and a great place to go to, not just...
Thank you, Pam.
Underpass, thanks.
That's all we have signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would wish to speak during public comment tonight? Seeing no one, we will continue on to council comments and reports. Go to Councilor Driscoll.
Sure. Thank you. Tomorrow, we have our Downtown Development Authority meeting. That's at ACC at 4:00, just on the main floor there. Come on by. We'll be going over the budget that will be presented to council here shortly and some other things that, for the holidays, playing for the holidays and stuff like that. Also attended the Alati Corridor study, the walking tour study of that. Didn't stay real long. Clearly, you know, we had, oh, boy, I'm guessing, close to 60 people out there. So lots of opinions flying back and forth. So I look forward to hearing from the Transportation Mobility Board or our Public Works Group as to some of the good suggestions they had to, to improve that corridor. Hopefully involve a police officer sitting there pulling people over. Thanks.
Councilor Peters?
Yeah, I just have a few things. I missed last week's meeting because I was at a municipal leadership training class. This is a great chance to connect with other council members and mayors across the state. We covered a wide variety of topics. We started at the headwaters in Winter Park. Water, losing sleep over water all the time now. Then we traveled over the mountains to tour Colorado Mesa University and talk with the president there about some of the cool things they are doing for enrollment and a lot is changing over there, which is really cool. And then also to talk about their energy supply, which, again, my brain doesn't work this way. Learned so much. And then we also toured Savage Winery and learned about how tourism and things like that are helping them, so how policymakers can support all of those things. Oh, before I forget, I have been to Littleton Brewery a few times and I've parked every time at the Benning Foundation, so, for that. The only other thing I wanted to announce is as I go into my third year on council, I want to try something different as far as hearing directly from people. I'm going to start on Friday, October 24th, from 9:00 to noon, having office hours at the BMS Library. That's something they'll put on their calendar. You don't need to make an appointment or anything. If you want to come talk, that's fine. If you don't, I will not be offended.
Birthday Boy? I mean, Councilmember Reichert?
Birthday Boy 60. That's my, was my handle today. Thank you very much for wishing me a happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Turning 60 feels very big. I want to, huh?
Do you mean old or big?
Just big. It feels, it's better than the alternative. There's no doubt about that. So I'm grateful to be able to do it. I want to echo Councilman Driscoll and say thank you to the transportation staff that conducted the Alati Street Walk. I thought that was a really powerful and valuable method of community engagement around some important questions around, you know, maintaining and improving the safety of our, of our streets. And so I'm really grateful for that. And then I also want to say thank you to staff as well for, I think, a very successful budget retreat. I feel like the presentations and information that we received during the budget retreat were both informative and helpful and it was a pleasant Saturday that we spent together learning more about the city. So thanks a lot for that. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Councilor Grove.
Yes, I also attended the Alati Walk and one of the things that I liked most about it was hearing the citizens were very pleased to get into the, to give their comments and feedbacks before anything was set, before there were a lot of options. So they kind of got in on the ground floor and they were very pleased with that. As a representative and liaison to Colorado Municipal League, I went to their district meeting where we met with other people in the area in this district, talked about what's going on with individual municipalities. And my impression was that we've got a lot on the table and we're doing a lot of things proactively, so, in comparison. The budget meeting that we had last Saturday was very good. We talked about a variety of issues, including how to shore up our ailing infrastructure. If you haven't done so already, I highly recommend the new Buddy Holly story, which is at Town Hall. It's a great musical. It's a whole lot of fun and it's the first of the season. So take a look at what Town Hall is offering this year and see what interests you and highly recommend Buddy Holly. I don't know if you're aware, you may have received an invitation for Longer Tables, which is a huge community event down here in downtown Littleton where you will break bread with other members of our community. If you want to sign up, all you need to do is Google Longer Tables and you can show up, get a registration. Also, I wanted to, that's it. That's all.
Okay, Mayor Porton?
Yeah. I'm going to echo one more time the thanks I have for staff and the discussion we had on Saturday. I know that's not easy, you know, coming in on your weekends, but it's greatly appreciated as well as all the long nights you guys spend here with us. You know, I also just want to say to all of the cities, city managers, city staff that like, look, I, you know, I may advocate for certain positions on our infrastructure funding and I may be getting into the weeds on it. I am just so excited to see this city taking large, meaningful steps forward and investing in ourselves. It is really exciting because this is not something that the city has done and I'm happy to have like been a part of it even, you know, two months before I'm out of here to have had a hand in that vote, you know, regardless of mechanism. So thank you guys for putting in the work and the sweat equity and hiring the team especially that can make these kinds of projects happen. It is well worth it for our future of the city. So, thank you. I want to shout out real quick, we had a Dr. Cog decarbonization board meeting this last Friday, talking about some new innovative research grant programs that are going to be coming out in the next two months, actually. So this is a different, different grant program than the one that the city of Littleton is currently working on. I know our environmental stewardship board and public work staff are working on a grant application to look at policies around greater inclusion of heat pumps and heat pump technology in our residential and commercial code, as well as other decarbonization efforts that can come forth from looking at solid waste management and modernizing our code in many different ways. So I just want to say thank you for devoting the staff time to that work. I think it's going to bear fruit in the long term. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. I just want to echo a couple of things that Councilmember Grove said to reinforce that Longer Tables event on September 24th. It should be a good event. Got a whole mile-long length of table through at Main Street. There are a few seats still available. We're hoping to get to 5,280 people. We're not quite there yet, but getting close. Should be a great event. And then also, I ran into Councilmember Grove at the Buddy Holly matinee on Sunday. It was a great show. Spoiler alert for anyone that doesn't know, it's not a happy ending, but the play does have a fun and exciting end to the play, maybe not to the Buddy Holly story itself. But in response to the citizen question about Littleton Brewery, I have been there a handful of times and I only have ever biked there. I've never driven my car there. I've never parked anywhere near there. I've locked my bike up, the bike lock, or bike rack. And then, yeah, to echo the Alati Street Tour, it was a great event. We had, I don't know, 10 or 12 people in my group. I thought it was worthwhile to stay the entire time to take a look at the length of the corridor there and see different aspects of it, hear from them. And it was, it was nice because there were different points of view and people, or at least in my group, were very respectful of each other, asked questions of why a bike lane should go somewhere or maybe not, or why there should be a sidewalk or maybe not. And I thought it was really good. So I really appreciate everyone, I think, aged from five to 75 in my group. And so that was a good event. I want to commend staff for that. I think people really appreciated that extra effort to go out there and listen to what things were being proposed and understanding that nothing was a foregone conclusion, but we were looking at options to test, to see what would make sense. And then thanks staff for the budget retreat. For those that don't know, council and staff spent a good portion of Saturday with the museum for our budget retreat. It wasn't much of a retreat, just a very, very long meeting, talking about the 2026 budget. And I want to have a special thank you to Pam Chadborn for being the only community member to attend that day. So I know you put a lot of work with that and we do appreciate our community members being involved. And then lastly, I just want to make a comment on the events of last week. That last Wednesday was a dark and heartbreaking day for our country. There was a horrific and indefensible political assassination and a way-too-common school shooting that occurred right here in our community. And I think it's important that leaders need to speak out against these heinous actions. And I want to be very clear that violence, whether political in our schools or in our cities, has no place in our society. I think we need to stand together to create a community, a country, where everyone can live free from fear, from threats and from physical harm. Parents should be able to feel comfort when they send their children to school and not fear that other kids won't come home. And people in the political realm should feel safe expressing their opinions and not worry that someone will knock on their door in the middle of the night and shoot them. I also want to do something, you probably won't hear me say that often, but one thing that I agree that President Trump said last week, that violence and murder are the tragic consequence of demonizing those with whom you disagree, day after day, year after year, in the most hateful and despicable way possible. What he said after that, I don't really think was helpful or becoming of a leader. This isn't a left or a right issue. This is an American issue. You know, the temperature of political discourse has been extremely high for these past 10 years. And I wish the president would actually take what he said to heart and set the tone for how we all should behave. I think we need to be able to have difficult discussions and lively debates when we disagree, especially during election season. But we need to stop demonizing people and groups with different political views. We need to stop saying that the people that we disagree with hate our country or are going to destroy the character of our community. So I'm asking everyone here in Littleton and beyond to just kind of lead by example and just be kinder to each other because there are more commonalities that unite us together than the differences that we may have politically. With that, I'm going to turn over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Mayor, I do feel like your comment warrants a moment to breathe. With that, I have one, one report tonight. I want to comment on one of the items on tonight's consent agenda. It's number 8A, which involves the Littleton Engineering Design Standards, or by the shorthand LED. It's on the consent agenda because staff believes that it is uncontroversial and technical in nature and you have a lengthy policy-focused agenda tonight. But it is noteworthy, however, it is, as, it is the first time that these technical infrastructure requirements have been consolidated into one document for Littleton. To this point, we have relied on a patchwork of national engineering standards, CDOT standards and other technical sources to guide our project, our very technical project requirements for new development. This project consolidates them in one place where civil engineering contractors and project applicants can find them and they can also be more consistent and trackable over time. I'm very grateful to our community development staff who have finally completed this project for Littleton. Once the LEDs are adopted, they'll be shared with the community via the Littleton Report and Littleton Report Online. We'll also have a page on the city's website where interested parties can find the information. Part of the LED's development process included review by the public and the contractor community and we'll be sending the document directly to all the folks who participated in that. So it's just a heads up on that item. We think it's important. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just addressing a couple of the, the public comments. First public comment I would address would be the conversations surrounding Trailmark and any potential changes out there, just for purposes of everyone understanding where... Just for purposes of everyone understanding where this is in the process, it's actually currently in JFCO. So Jefferson County has their own process to go through in terms of amending the PD, the annexation agreement that originally was part of that parcel. They're referring to it as a rezone. In our minds, it would probably be more of a PD amendment, but it is what it is. It's in JFCO. Once it finishes up in JFCO, it's actually an item that will be heard before our city council. It requires a rezoning. Currently, it's listed as CM, and my understanding is, is that the proposed development would seek to build more single-family residential, so it would probably have to move to SLR. So that's an item that will come before this council to make that decision. Prior to, to that, though, it will actually go to our planning commission. And our planning commission will make a recommendation on the rezoning. They'll go through the criteria. There will be a public hearing, there will be public comment at that planning commission meeting, and then they'll submit that recommendation to city council, of which city council will then schedule that meeting, also have a public hearing, accept public comment on that item, and make a decision hopefully based upon the criteria. So that's all that we can do right now until there's actually a, an application in front of our city council on the Trailmark issue. So, in regard to Mr. Harris's comments and concerns surrounding some of the language within that statute that talks about tolling. So from my interpretation and outside council's interpretation, we looked at that provision as not necessarily a barrier to keeping this off of the ballot. We looked at that tolling provision as something in which the period of time in which councils refer to counties, if that's what we're doing, or hold elections, is told. It doesn't necessarily, in my opinion, or in outside council's opinion, require us to toll that. I heard very loud and clear from this council, from everyone on this council, that it is not the intent of the city to delay the, our voters from voting on this charter amendment. So that is the way that I'm proceeding. That is the direction that I believe I receive from all of council, and if there is something that causes some hiccup, we will address that. But our intent, and, you know, at this point, I think I will speak for city council, is to have this appear on the November 4th election. So if I misunderstood that from any council member, I'm happy to accept a redirection on that.
I don't think you misunderstood that at all. I do have one question about that, though, with the, the, tolling is, is that another term for like a delay or postponement? If the judge were to say it is unconstitutional, for whatever reason, could the judge remove it from the ballot and that that's not tolling? Is that something separate?
I don't know if the judge would have the authority to do that.
Okay.
I just, I don't know the answer to that, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Councilmember Record?
I had two questions required based on our, I'm just kinda curious whether, and you don't have to, you could, you could tell me later, you know, if you, 'cause that is a kind of a random detailed question.
Because this would deal with a specific applicant rezoning their own property, it would not necessarily trigger the ordinance that we just passed.
Okay.
What we passed was when the city was actually pursuing the rezoning on our own behalf.
Okay.
In this case, an individual property owner, they would still need to mail notice to those affected parcels within that certain radius of the location.
Thank you. And I guess I wanna ask, this is a rhetorical question, so, you know, did you tell us, brief us, that tolling was one of the components of the law that is part of this lawsuit?
I believe we did talk about the fact that the intent of this, one of the intents of actually this legislation was to stop those items from being actually on the election.
And did we, did we direct you not to exercise that to the best of your ability tolling option?
My understanding, my direction is to have this proceed on the November 4th ballot.
Yes.
That's what council told me.
Right, okay, just one, I always, those are rhetorical questions. So, thank you.
Um, that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a councilor. Excuse me. Resolution 89, 2025, adopting Littleton Engineering Design Standards. Resolution 87, 2025, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and Arapahoe County, open spaces for the 2024 Grant Award for High Line Canal Stewardship Projects Regarding the High Line Canal Irrigated Tree Planting Pilot Project. Resolution 88, 2025, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and the High Line Canal Conservancy for the 2024 Grant Award for High Line Canal Stewardship Projects Regarding the High Line Canal Irrigated Tree Planting Pilot Project. DID 25, 207, motion to appoint councilmember recommended replacement appointment of the 2025, 2026 Charter Review Committee.
Pull.
Pulled by Councilmember Driscoll. EID 25, 208, motion to approve minutes of September 2nd, 2025, regular city council meeting.
Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E. Any further discussion, council? Voting's open?
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll, why did you pull, uh, item DID 25, 207?
Yeah, I'd like to have a little discussion around the appointee. It was Councilman Reichardt's recommendation that Keely Quinn be the, fill in the, the spot that was vacated. And I have a problem with Ms. Quinn becoming that, taking that spot, mainly because she, you know, she's part of vibrant Littleton. I, I'd like people, I'd like somebody that's not related to this topic of 3A and somebody that's not part of a group. I'd, I'd like somebody more independent. In addition, I've heard some concerns about Ms. Quinn's conduct while petitions were out there getting signatures for, for the three, what is now the 3A measure. Very belligerent, where she was really creating quite a scene and actually stopping people from signing the petition. So for those reasons, I'm asking for, I'd like to make a motion to pull Keely Quinn and ask Councilman Reichardt to recommend somebody new.
I don't hear a second, so...
I made, I made a motion.
We, I understand that. I don't hear a second.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear anybody.
So...
I'd wanna make sure people realize that was a motion.
Okay. With the lack of a second, the motion dies. I would just like to point out that each council member was afforded the right to appoint people. We didn't discuss at length qualifications of anyone before. There were other people that are, I believe, that are associated with the Rooted in Littleton Group that are on...
But, but nobody, we, we haven't discussed Keely's qualifications. She's just been, we're, we're...
That's exactly how the process works for everyone else, Patrick.
Right, well, I didn't get a second, so...
I know, I'm, I'm just saying that we didn't look at other people's affiliations as well, and there are people that are associated with the Rooted in Littleton Group too. So if we wanna go that route, we can pull people off. Councilmember Reichardt, since this was your recommendation, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve council recommended replacement appointment to the 25, 26 Charter Review Committee.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to make the appointment of Keely Quinn to the 2025, 26 Charter Review Committee council. Any further discussion? Mayor Portem?
Yeah, you know, this is obviously just on consent, so when we actually bring this up in the fu, and when this gets brought up in the future, I think it's well worth, you know, airing thoughts and concerns that you have about a particular candidate at the time of that, but I'm okay, actually.
What do you mean brought up in the future? This is appointing the person to the charter committee.
Oh, is this like the actual full point? Okay. My mistake.
This is, yeah, there's, we have the committee, there's one person that has been unable to attend. This is just putting Ms. Quinn on the Charter Review Committee.
Okay.
So there's...
Never mind.
No future discussion. We have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Quinn to the Charter Review Committee. Voting's open?
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Driscoll voting no. The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Grove?
What Councilmember Barr mentioned brings up a point that's something we might wanna consider. We made these appointees in isolation, and maybe this is something that we need to review before we finalize because there may be overlaps or there may be things that we don't know about an individual that somebody else does. So I, I'm thinking that before we go about appointing, maybe we get a list and, you know, air it with all our fellow council members before finalizing.
I, I agree. I've talked to the city manager and city clerk about this with our boards of commissions, kind of how we appoint boards of commissions and how this should align with that, where it's just not one council member getting someone on regardless of qualifications that everyone had, without seeing the names ahead of time. So I, I agree 100% and we'll be discussing that at a future meeting. Mayor, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, I just would like to let the council know that we do have a, a study session in October that would facilitate council's discussion of the boards and, and commissions' purposes and appointment structure and several other policy considerations as well.
Thank you.
All right. Item nine, general business. We have a couple of items on general business tonight. First up is ID 25, 189, Fuel Station Moratorium Update. And so we'll have a presentation by staff and discussion about that. So, staff. And I'll turn it over to the city manager to do a little tip dance on why they come up here.
I'll talk slowly as they approach. Yes, Mayor, and council, early this spring, the council requested a study session to consider land use related, or land use concerns related to fuel stations. And we had that study session in April. And coming out of that study session, council surfaced several policy issues that they would like researched and, and potential paths that they could take. So in April, the, and May, with, with two readings, the council adopted a moratorium on fuel station development. So with that, the staff began the research that council, council, council requested. Some of that was about land use and some of the land use options that could be implemented for fuel stations, but a lot of the council discussion was about economics and some of the, the land use trade-offs and economic trade-offs that could come from, from that. So with that, we have our, our, our planning manager with us this evening and also a consultant who can help us with the economic questions. Jared, take it away.
All right, thank you very much, City Manager and, and Mayor. Before you this evening, we have an update on the fuel sales retail, often referred to as gas stations, and a little bit of a code comparison. So first, we're going to go through Littleton's existing code conditions and some of our neighboring cities' codes, national trends, and then some conclusions before we have a secondary presentation. So Littleton's existing code, I know we talked about this a little bit, this is a little bit of a refresher. We talked about it about, you know, four months ago, prior to the moratorium being passed, but the fuel sales are permitted use in the business corridor and industrial park zone districts. So that means that they are largely an item that can be administratively approved via a site plan process with some neighborhood meetings. Then fuel sales are conditional use in neighborhood commercial and corridor mix use district, corridor mixed districts. So gas stations are required to have that, that public hearing component before the planning commission, and the planning commission would be the ultimate deciding body in a conditional use. See, there are no, currently in our code, there are no additional provisions or restrictions as to the size of a gas station. So I provide the, I provide the table on the bottom of this slide as a reference to the code. Existing conditions are about 24, well, there are 24 gas stations within the city of Littleton, and then approximately a number, another 20 gas stations within 1.5 miles of the city's corporate limits. Existing conditions continued, some of these images you've seen in the past, and like I mentioned, doing a little bit of a refresher. The green areas are areas that allow fuel sales with that administrative process, and then the purple areas are areas that you would have to have the conditional use of the planning commission approval. There are some existing planned developments that do allow for fuel sales as well, and those are not captured within, within this, but they would be within those zone districts. We did that secondary review on, on this map of, you know, what's a modern-day fuel sale location look like. Most of them take up a little more land than they used to in the past. Our access requirements are a little different. We have a number of conditions that, that ultimately relate to a little larger site as well as the market looking at more pumps. So we did remove in this map a lot of the locations that are under an acre to try to demonstrate that, that there are fewer areas that we feel are, you know, realistic for gas station development. So you can see a lot of Littleton Boulevard changes from this map to this map, along with a few others, especially along Broadway. So a little bit of a comparison from Littleton to the state of Colorado. So 24 fuel stations at approximately, you know, 45,652 residents is about one station per 1,900 residents. Throughout the state of Colorado, you have 5,773,000, you know, plus residents, about 26 fuel stations per 100,000 residents, so that's about one fuel station per 3,846 residents, which is quite a bit of a difference. However, we would like to note that there are a lot of areas of Colorado that are rural in nature, and unless you are close to an interstate, oftentimes they were underserved by fuel stations. Neighboring cities' codes, so took a look at a number of our, of our neighbors. So the city of Parker, gas stations are permitted use in most mixed-use districts. They are special use, basically the same thing as a conditional use. Different codes call them different things, but they largely have a similar outcome. Special use in light industrial. They also have some other interesting provisions. Shall not be located within 500 feet of a school, hospital, continuing care facility, amongst others. Shall not be located within 250 feet of a hard corner or residential zone property. So when they say hard corner, in the past, it was very common to put that gas station right at the intersection, but oftentimes that's no longer common practice for municipalities because of the desired access into the gas station. So in the past, you could have these really big, long curb cuts, everybody could come right in and out, and it was really close to an intersection. So what this ordinance is trying to do is push that access a little further away from that intersection to allow for better traffic flow. And then, not more than two gas stations shall be located within 660 feet of that corner, so trying to disperse those gas stations. Englewood, gas stations are permitted use in industrial districts and conditional use in arterial business. There's also some additional smaller development standards as well, similar to what we have in our code, some other development standards. Aurora, gas stations are permitted, are a permitted use in most industrial districts. They are a conditional use in some mixed-use districts, also within compliance with other conditions. Then Castle Rock's a little bit more of a permissive locale, so gas stations are permitted in business, commercial, and industrial districts, so they do not have a conditional or special use provision for any of those districts. Lakewood, gas stations are permitted use in commercially zoned districts. However, there's a minimum of a half-mile in-between stations, and then at least three EV charging stations are required for those new fuel stations. Then Lewisville, another, had another interesting take, not quite in the neighborhood, but we felt that was an interesting comparable. interesting take, not quite in the neighborhood, but we felt that was an interesting comparable. Gas stations are conditional use in commercially zoned districts. City Council capped the number, the total number of stations at six citywide, and then new stations are allowed in, as a part of a larger retail center, that must be at least 1,000 feet away from another station. So allowing them in conjunction with, you know, those grocery stores, et cetera. And then Denver, which we've heard a lot about in the news here lately, gas stations are permitted use in most zone districts with significant limitations. Must be a quarter mile away from existing stations, low intensity residential zones, and RTD stations. New stations must provide EV charging stations, and then gas stations, conjoined with large retailers, kind of like that Lewisville item, are exempt from some of these restrictions, the gas station that is associated with a grocery store, as an example. We also looked around the country, and there are many different, many different ways in which communities have addressed fueling stations. Oftentimes, in different areas of the country, that's, there's not a lot of provisions. However, we did find a few that were somewhat interesting. Petaluma, California, construction, new gas stations are banned in the city. Existing stations cannot expand in fossil fuels. They could expand in other means such as EV charging stations. Goal is to reduce pollution in line with their city policies. And then in New York, the Lewisboro, construction, new gas stations are banned in that city. Station expansion requires council approval. Then in conclusion, Littleton allows for gas stations in most commercial and industrial districts. You know, as I mentioned, sometimes that's with a conditional use, but we have focused on those two versions of zoning districts. Other jurisdictions, stations, you know, there's a wide range, but we have seen a trend towards some added restrictions on gas stations in the Denver metro area, for the most part, with a few exceptions. Then nationwide, due to some sustainability items, we've seen much stricter gas station regulations as well. And with that, I will pull up the next presentation.
Jared, while you're doing that, can you confirm that the gas stations going in at Costco are greater than 500 feet to Primrose Academy there, right on South Park?
I can do some measuring and get you an answer on that, absolutely.
Yeah.
I do not know off the top of my head. I believe they are, but I would like to...
I think that would have been handled, but I just wanted for people listening to know that I think we're at 700 and some yards, or feet away. So I just want people to be assured that that falls within our guidelines. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor.
Oh, yep.
All right. I think that works. No, you're fine. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Andrew Knudsen with Economic and Planning Systems. I've worked with several of you in previous hearings, and it's nice to be back, as well as with the staff. Overview of EPS for anyone listening to this back at home. We have eight lines of business, and our focus is land use economics, ultimately providing economic data to inform land use policy. Summary of what we're going to go through, and we've got several slides on the economics of gas stations in the city of Littleton. We've used three relevant metrics for this evening. The first is peer community benchmarking. The second is a fiscal analysis looking at revenue, specifically revenue to the city. And the third is a leakage analysis in terms of dollar flow, a net dollar flow in or out of the city. And we'll get into each one of these in a little bit more detail throughout the course of this slide deck. First, moving into pure city conditions, here are, here's a geographic dispersment of where we have existing and proposed stations, existing in red, proposed in blue. And you can see, it's interesting, we have quite a few on the perimeter of the city. And we have a total of 24, as Jared noted, and we have 1,902 residents per station, given the population of Littleton. Parker, we chose Parker as a peer community in part, and there's no good peers, right? We've been doing case studies for private developers, public city clients, and whenever you identify a peer, there's always reasons why it's not a good peer. But collectively, one of the things that we liked about Parker is that it's on the periphery of Denver metro. It's fairly unconstrained in terms of growth, and it provides a good alternative to Littleton, which is fairly built out. We have 26 gas stations in Littleton at Parker, and based on their population, 2,518 residents per station. We'll have a summary table in a few slides, so you can track the math. I should also just mention that our methodology for this analysis was first to look at CoStar, which is a commercial real estate aggregation dataset. Second, we looked at Google Earth. And third, we relied on Assessor data in terms of querying fuel stations and pulling that up on Assessor data. So, and then we also worked with staff in terms of the Littleton analysis. We also looked at Lakewood. Lakewood is interesting because it's fairly built out, has a lot of perimeter that's porous, lots of perimeter width other cities, somewhat like Littleton. We've got 43 gas stations in Lakewood, 3,648 residents per station. Finally, our last comp is Boulder. It is relatively isolated. It's on the perimeter of Denver metro, and it has historically relatively strict land use regulations. So we've got, we pulled in different examples from different cities, 4,450 residents per station. This is our summary table. So you can see our peer communities, Parker, Lakewood, Boulder, average of 31 gas stations among the different, three different cities, an average of 3,539 gas stations per, residents per station. Littleton, oh, sorry. Littleton currently has 24 gas stations and that 1,870 residents per station. Littleton would need to lose 11 stations to bring it down to this average of peer communities. If it had 13 stations, it would fall in right in line with the average of these other three. So it's almost oversupplied by almost a factor of two.
Councilmember Rickard has a question?
I guess, I appreciate the analysis, and I feel like this is a tough question to kind of, to get your hands around, but I'm not 100% confident that stations per resident is a meaningful metric. The, you know, what, gas stations are, I mean, in some ways, they serve residents, but really, they serve cars and trips through a city. And, you know, what matters is kind of how many cars are traveling through that need additional gas. And so, while I appreciate this analysis, I guess, I guess I'm making a comment, not a question, so I apologize. Unless you want...
I'll make it a question.
You'll make it a question?
Sort of. I was gonna wait to the end, but...
Okay. All right. Well, I can stop, but I just, it just, I'm not 100%, this is not a convincing metric for me. So...
I'll tweak it a little bit from what he was going at. You know, the idea of stations, I have more interest in the number of pumps versus station, because you have, a station could have, you know, four pumps, or, you know, the Circle K over on Littleton of Windermere has eight pumps right there. How many people can fill up at one time, basically? I think that's the more important metric there, where we've heard, you know, the new Costco's gonna have 32 pumps there. So it's, there's a little bit of difference. You can't count those equally because you can get a lot more cars through there. So that's, I think, would that be a better metric?
Okay, so two...
Two slightly different questions, but both concerned about the use of a station.
Yes, yes. Appreciate both. If you see the last bullet on this slide, even if we account for communities east of Broadway, Littleton is still oversupplied. And I think your comment, Councilmember Rickard, is that it's really about a larger market, and I'm reading between the lines here, but the perimeter of a municipality may not be respective of how a market works, which is true. And Littleton has a very porous border, if you will, with a lot of gas stations right on the border, pulling in dollars from other communities for spending in Littleton. So it's...
I think Councilmember Rickard was saying, you're basing that supply based on 44,179 people. A lot more people drive through Littleton than actually use it here. So I think that's...
I feel like you're both not representing the accuracy.
Yeah, yeah. And we tried to...
I can try to misrepresent you if you want.
Good deal. And we tried to acknowledge that in the slide ahead of time. So moving into another metric would be revenue. And how does the city of Littleton, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, there were two comments raised. One was about overall, what's appropriate metric for peer communities. The other is, is it the station or is it the number of pumps? And that's a little bit more granular, and I think better. I mean, you're asking us if more data is better, and the answer is always yes. I mean, I say that in jest, but yeah, I mean, that would be a better metric. Comes down to a little bit of, the time it takes to research that information is a little tricky, but it's not impossible to get that, not only for Littleton. I think, in fact, Jared is already one step ahead of the rest of the team.
Yeah, we do have that data on our gas stations. So we did survey all 24. We actually, the person I had work on this item picked up a 25th, which is outside. I haven't quite had the time to research exactly which one that is to cross it out, but I know there's one right on the line there. So I have numbers on 25 gas stations right now, and I have both the number of pumps, and then, you know, that also, you double that, it corresponds to the number of cars that are allowed. And I did put that in the research parameter for, for the staff member that looked at this. So ultimately, it boils down to an average of 8.7 cars able to be, able to be serviced at one time throughout the gas stations. So there are a number of gas stations that have pretty small footprints, right? There's one on Mineral that only has, you know, two islands, so four pumps, right? And then there are others that get up into the 20, the 10 islands, 20 pumps, 20 cars that can be serviced at one time. So if you have any more questions, I do have that data, and I'm happy to, you know, attempt to analyze it throughout the meeting. And then, real quick, just to answer Councilman Driscoll's prior question, it's approximately 1,250 feet from the gas station to Primrose.
We'd be happy to provide similar, parallel information for the peer communities with a little bit of time. Another metric to look at would be revenue, and how does the city of Littleton fare fiscally with the construction of filling stations? And there are four types of revenue generated. The first is the highway user tax fund revenue. Then we've got sales tax, property tax, and use tax. So without using terms a little loosely, the HUTF revenue is what appears to be sales tax at the pump, and it goes to the state. The sales tax that goes to the city is on merchandise inside the convenience store. So if it's food and what have you inside the convenience store, that flows to the local municipality. If it's fuel, it flows to the state, which then is rebated to municipalities based on a somewhat complicated formula based on number of cars registered, vehicles registered, and lane miles that exist. So if you're a small municipality on the eastern plains or county that has low population, low number of vehicles, but a lot of lane miles, the state's formula recognizes that and gives you some buffer to manage your inventory. So, but the bottom line is that, and there's a condition on it, that it be specifically used for street maintenance, essentially.
And it's not based on the number of stations. It's just vehicle registrations and lane miles. So if you have one gas, no gas stations, you still get HUTF funds. If you have...
Right.
Bills, you know, a million of them, you'd get the same amount.
Exactly, exactly. Then we have sales tax, which is applied to the goods sold on site, depending on if you've got convenience or not. Then property tax, straightforward. Use tax is what's paid to the city or any municipality upon construction. So this, to your point, Mayor, Littleton's HUTF revenues are relatively stable over time, and it just flows to, based on it's statewide revenue, and it's this formula, and it comes to the city, and it's, you know, doesn't fluctuate very much. Here are the conditions for the use of the revenues, road construction, safety improvements, and reconstruction, repair, and maintenance. The, this is a fair amount of detail in terms of how that state formula is structured. So essentially, the 14% of the total funds go to municipalities, 80% based on the number of vehicles, 20% is based on road miles. So now you know all the details about how HUTF works.
I feel like we need one of those rainbows that goes across the more you know.
There you go. Sales tax, to generate an estimate of what a typical filling station is going to generate for the city, we looked at seven hypothet, well, not, we looked at very, seven very concrete examples in the city of Littleton. And working with the finance department, we've protected the anonymity of each, which is just the way business should be done. And we have an average of $266 per square foot per year of sales in these convenience stores. And so generally, based on this sales, a typical size, total revenues or total sales of 665,000 annually, the city of Littleton, sales tax rate of 3.75, the city's getting around 25,000 annually, which translates to 0.04% of annual funds, of general fund revenues. Property tax, the same square footage, 2,500, construction costs at 700 bucks a foot, total construction cost 1.8 million. And then the assessment value and on the materials, then the one time, I clicked twice. Let's do property tax first. 2,500 square feet, property value 700 bucks, total appraised value 1.7 million, assessment ratio of 27% and a property tax of two mils, just under $1,000 per station per year. Use tax is a one-time revenue collected at time of permit, 33,000 per permit, at time of construction. The summary, not a significant revenue source for the city of Littleton. Third metric that we looked at is a leakage analysis. And on the leakage analysis, essentially, we look at, using secondary sources, specifically Claritas, we look at the dollars available within the city of Littleton for expenditure on gasoline sales. Then we compare that to the supply of stations within the city to determine a net deficit or oversupply. And then, in this case, we have an oversupply of $17 million based on the number of stations in the city. So three different metrics. We tried to tackle this from different perspectives, and I'm just going to say a few more comments about how to interpret, how you might want to interpret the data. We spend a lot of time in our firm evaluating data that ultimately is translated and used as a platform to adopt policy. Active clients for us right now, it's interesting, are Pittkin County and the city of Aspen, and Harris County and the city of Houston. So we have one foot in a world where they have not met a regulation they didn't like, and one foot in a world where it is the most laissez faire, the least amount of regulation is the best. And at the end of the day, calibration is what we would recommend. How do you calibrate the data and calibrate it to a local community's need? Aspen and Houston, very different worlds. They each have thriving economies and have succeeded in their own ways. Our data, based on the market analysis, is that the market is oversaturated. Even when you account for the porosity or how porous the borders are and inflow from adjacent communities, there's still a margin that would suggest that we have an oversupply. Does that, does that mean, what does that mean in terms of market implications? One, the market is not likely to invest capital in Littleton in additional gas stations. However, if we have a competitor that wants to really get into this market, I mean, you've got amazing demographics... I mean, you've got amazing demographics and great expenditure potential, it may very well want to get a, a foothold in this market and may try to do that. You currently have conditional use standards and zoning regulations that stipulate where they can be located. How much does it warrant adding to that? And does it warrant eliminating these uses and taking them off the table? We, as our firm, works with a variety of communities throughout the Western US. We are seeing, uh, in this climate, more and more communities retract opportunity. And I guess the question we would leave you with is, do you want to make decisions that run in perpetuity affecting councils for decades to come? Or do you want to let them, do you want to give latitude to future councils to make decisions as needs arise? And we would suggest fewer regulations, particularly where the market is performing the way it is right now. I mean, it's pretty saturated, the level of interest is going to be minimal. You may be able to do less now, provide latitude in the future and still accomplish your goals. And with that, happy to answer questions.
Questions, council?
Can you reiterate what you're saying about what's building?
So, um, thank you for the question. If the city of Littleton adopted a moratorium, it's very hard to unwind that. If you rely on conditional use and market factors, that may be sufficient to limit the number of gas stations that the cities, additional gas stations the city's going to see. So it really is just, the moratorium is, is very permanent. Theoretically you can take it off the books, but it's, in terms of the effort, it's quite a lift.
A moratorium is temporary, a ban would be.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just wanted to.
Okay.
I, I completely understand where. Completely understand where Andrew is going. I think that, you know, the term moratorium, which is in effect now, has a, has a sunset timeline. It's a prohibited use, I think is, is, uh, what the, uh, what the reference was meant to be.
Sorry, so Jared, we have permitted use under vehicle accessories and parts and sales under, so it's allowed without any, um, it, it's used by right.
Outside the moratorium, correct, yes.
Yes.
So in the BC and IP, so in our more industrial and business center districts, it's a permitted use. And, and I believe, uh, you're referencing a different line in the table. It's the, uh, fuel, it's the retail fuel sales, um, rather than the parts, et cetera. Let me pull up my.
So it's, we only have part of the matrix here. So in essence, it's permitted.
And so you're correct, in some areas it's permitted and in some areas it's conditional.
Conditional.
Yes.
So why, it, so you're letting market forces, you want, you're recommending market forces take place as opposed to not allowing it. However, we've seen a lot of recent activity, even though we're already saturated. I mean, we had across the street for the Sinclair, we have Costco and we just, what, a circle?
Quick trip.
Quick trip. So it would appear that we're oversaturated, but we still have more coming in.
It's a good point and I've said this before, Littleton has some very enviable demographics. So there are people who will, uh, strive to get into the market, even if there's, uh, the marginal revenues that they might see from an investment here might be less than what they might see in a, in a different community that has less.
I have comments, but I'll wait to that.
Okay.
Uh, city manager, were you doing a comment?
Yes, just to kind of, uh, just to, um, conclude staff's, uh, presentation, just summarize options for, for council. Tonight we are seeking your, your direction. Uh, you know, we've, we've given you some recommendation at, at this point about the, uh, planning controls that we, we have in place and the relative saturation of the market and that there might not be a, a need to, uh, set further regulation. That's one path tonight. The other is that we take your, your, your questions and this discussion may prompt additional questions for, uh, research and, uh, policy options. We could take that, that direction and go back and do, and continue that, uh, research. If you choose that, that path tonight, we would, we, the current moratorium expires the first week of, of November. So, um, we would plan to come back in October and extend the, a moratorium, which would, would give us time to continue the research on this, this topic, along with or as part of the rest of the work that we're doing right now in the, in the community development department. So just to kind of set the stage, uh, and I know you have more questions and, uh, discussion, but those are really the options tonight.
Councilmember Peters?
Yeah, I, sorry, I should have asked sooner. Do we have any sort of requirement around new gas stations having a charging device of any kind?
So the requirements that we have are, would pertain to the most recent, uh, uh, building code adoption. So the state of Colorado mandated adoption of, uh, EV and solar ready, uh, code. And that code does indicate for buildings or for locations that have more than 10 parking spaces, a percentage of those parking spaces is having EV capability there.
Being EV ready or having a charging port?
So there's actually, there's four different, uh, classifications. And some of them are having EV charging, others are EV ready. Um, and there's two different class, additional classifications, but a lot, a lot of it is having the infrastructure.
EV curious and then, you know, kind of.
Yeah, and I, I did have that for us, just so I can, uh, not misspeak. Uh, installed spaces, ready spaces, uh, capable spaces, capable light spaces. What all that means, I can dig into this document and give you a summary, but that's the four.
Not fully capable, but capable-ish.
But that's parking, not gas stations.
Correct. So if you had a convenience store, um, our parking table is reflective of the square footage of the building most of the time, or sometimes we add in employee spaces being counted, et cetera. So if the size of the convenience store was such that it generated or, or required more than 10 spaces, then this part of the, uh, building code would kick in and we would have to comply with, or the site would have to comply with that, yes.
So that feels like a no to me. I can't picture a small gas station that has more than 10 parking spaces.
The, the ones that have been proposed, uh, here recently that have that convenience store component are larger than that, that have, have more parking space than 10.
So did the quick trip that went in, does that have EV spots there since that would be larger than 10?
So, uh, no, because we just adopted this code over the summer. So it was not, it was not required.
Thank you. Mayor Brotem?
Yeah, I mean, we can move on to comments for.
But we don't, we don't have, this is just an update, so we can have comments and questions.
Let me, let me just ask, uh, about a redevelopment of an existing gas station. Uh, if we give direction on, uh, extending the moratorium another six months or wherever the discussion is, you know, would an existing, uh, facility be allowed to, uh, add additional pumps if they wanted to?
Yeah, so it kind of depends on where they're located. If it's a permitted use, it would be some form of minor plan amendment, et cetera, maybe a, a major plan amendment. In locations where, uh, it requires a conditional use, first we would look at it from the perspective of the code to see if it fell within that minor or major plan amendment, because there are some criteria there. If it exceeded those and it did require a full process, then we would look through the, look to the conditional use process.
So the answer is maybe.
Is, you're correct.
Councilmember, or let's see, who hasn't? Okay, I'll let, you have another question real quick, Councilmember Peters, go.
I would love to hear, uh, our economic director's opinion on, I feel like attaching the word ban or moratorium to any city is not favorable for businesses that are looking to come here or banks that are looking to fund any sort of development. Is that, do you have an opinion on that or can you speak to that?
Good evening, thank you for the question, Councilmember, um, Peters. I think as, as Andrew was talking through in, in his summary comments, sometimes the appearance of shutting down for business can carry through when cities pass bans or moratoriums. I think the messaging in that would be critical, um, to make sure folks understand the parameters and that. And that's something that we see start to, to initiate a slide maybe in peer communities, um, starting with one ban or another. It's not to say that, that will happen here, um, i- if we're, we're mindful and, and careful about how it's ruled out and how we're communicating about it. There, there is always a risk there though.
And I think also on top of that, Rachel, you know, we can also look at it as protecting business. You know, the existing business that's already here to ensure the market doesn't get saturated. So I think there's two ways of looking at it.
Councilmember Rekert?
First of all, thank you for all this work and I, I'm sorry I gave you such a hard time, that was. The, so I, I appreciate all this work. I, I've, um, you know, I think this is a, uh, a, there's good things and bad things about our current situation. I think the, the $17 million surplus indicates that we're extracting sales tax out of our neighboring cities as people commute through here and use our gas stations. And I think that's a positive thing for our city and a positive thing for our taxes. That said, I do feel like we have enough gas stations in, in, in town and I think we, um, I would, I would be interested in creating, um, uh, opportunities to slow gas station expansion into, into Littleton. Additional gas station expansion into Littleton. And I guess, you know, the one that strikes me is the easiest way to do it would be to, um, remove the opportunity for permitted use and make it a conditional use and then talk about the conditions that we would like the planning commission to take into account. That feels like a, uh, uh, not an easy way, but a relatively gentle way to kind of be clear that I've gotten, I feel like we have enough, so.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I think the, the, out of the presentation, the two things that caught my eye were, um, or next steps were, uh, perhaps requiring EV stations to be, um, at some percentage of the gas stations and then also the conditional use. As we've heard, you know, community, uh, wants to have a say on some of the, the, the development that goes on in the, uh, in the city here. And I think a conditional use would provide that. I don't want to see a, a ban outright per se, but perhaps a, a conditional use where there is currently permitted use might make sense. Councilmember Grove?
Uh, I agree with the mayor and Councilmember Rekert. Another thing to consider, how many, first of all, the market, as we found out for, answer the question, it's not regulating your, itself. And I don't think we need more gas stations. Um, I don't think they add to the character of our community. There's issues, there's environmental issues as we hear from our citizens. So I agree taking all the Ps and making them Cs. And there you go.
Hereby decree all Ps are Cs. No, I, and I'm going to echo some of the similar sentiment. I actually, you know, having worked at gas stations, done brownfield remediation work in the past, I think an active and well-maintained and well-regulated gas station is not necessarily the environmental concern that we have heard from some of our citizens. I think, uh, our general air pollution will kill us faster than a gas station. But, um, to, taking a step back from that, I, I want to say too that, that, more stress. I want to say that the economic analysis was really fascinating to me as to how little actually is generated from these places. Like, to me, I think this, it, it is an opportunity lost when the gas station is put into place because you are not putting something else in that spot, right? And the fact that it is not like, it is not a pan, it's certainly not a panacea of revenue generation. And ultimately our biggest source of revenue through the highway user tax fee is not affected by the number of gas stations, which I probably should have known at one point during the last four years. But, I mean, it just seems to me like an, an, an economic waste, given the amount of market saturation that we have. So, um, to Councilmember Rekert's part, point, I think there are very specific types and conditions in places and spaces where we should take deliberation to whether a gas station should be part of that mix. Given the opportunity, I would have said yes to that Costco. There are far more benefits that outweigh the negatives in an economic, uh, in an economic advancement like that. But there are certainly circumstances that I don't think would necessarily warrant that approval. So, um, I would be interested in, I guess, my future counsel contemplating this further.
So I'm kind of hearing council would like some, you know, further discussion on making a conditional use and I don't know if there is a consensus on adding EVs to that. Would it be prudent to extend the moratorium to have those discussions? Let the moratorium expire and do code updates, um, without a moratorium? I'm looking to staff to figure out what would be the proper or efficient way to have those.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm hearing perhaps, uh, a couple of different things coming by way of council. It seems that we're hearing a bit of a consensus related to, uh, making those used by rights to be conditional uses, so that would require changes to the ULUC, which we would get recommendations from PC prior to coming back before city council. I'm also hearing perhaps interest in the EV charging.
Is, I think, who else was the, anyone, who else is interested in EV?
I'm not against the EV charging requirement. It feels like, um, and maybe I'm just, it, not up to speed, but, you know, the, the parking lots are small. And so you, you don't want a car that's camping out there for half an hour to get charged, or maybe you do. I mean, I'm just worried about the, the logistics of what an EV does to a small parking, an EV charging station does to it. But I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm not anti it, but that's something I would want to learn more about.
Head shaking for that, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So yes, so yes, there, I think there was some consensus on EV.
So, um, that would probably, i- if it was simply just changing the permitted use by right to a conditional use, I think we could probably get that going or at least be able to stand behind the pending ordinance doctrine prior to.
I am looking at Jared.
November, but.
And I also want to say, I don't know if there's necessarily a rush for council, that it needs to be done.
Understanding that there's some other things that we'll need to consider and, and making sure that it aligns with our various building codes and IECC codes. I think probably what's best would be to continue the moratorium. For, and now we're, now we're both looking at Jared trying to get direction in terms of how long his staff needs.
Yeah, um, if, if the direction, uh, is to, you know, move this item through planning commission as a simple change of the, of the table, I, I certainly understood where, you know, Councilmember Grove was going with the Ps and the Cs. I was good with that. But if, if it's that, if it's that simple of a, of a change, you know, we, we can move that fairly quickly through planning commission. We would probably like to take the opportunity to look at some of the conditions, uh, as well that are associated with those conditional uses to see if they need updating. But at the same time, if it, if it's that simple change, we can move that through planning commission. Now I will say, um, just because a no saying, et cetera, um, it would take still longer than that early November timeline.
Yes, and. Yeah, yeah, I don't think that was.
Jared, I really do want to say that we're hearing from council their expectation that we take the time that this needs. So I, I don't want you to feel like, like there is urgency to, to bring this, this back. I think our plan would be to, um, extend the, uh, moratorium. So we, we want your team to have time to do this, you know.
I think Reeve was looking, is, I mean, 90 days, 112, how, how long was the moratorium originally?
It was 180 days. We can, we'll bring something back in.
We'll talk.
In October with a duration based upon the recommendation from PC, or excuse me, planning in terms of how long it will take to get.
And then I guess a question for Jared, would the, going from permitted use to conditional use be more simple than adding an EV requirement somewhere in there? And would that do it, and could a EV requirement come back later in a year or two after the, the permitted to conditional use? I don't, I don't, I'm not asking, Mayor Brotem?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's also well worth considering, I probably won't be voting on it. Like if this council wants to put other conditions in terms of proximity to other gas stations, proximity to hospital schools, things of that nature too. I mean, I think, you know, you can add on that conditionality that we've seen another.
So, sorry, I was a little confused as the, as the two. If, if we wanted to, we could do the simple change to allow, go from permitted to conditional. We could do that, you know, at, uh, at one point and then come back with some more conditionality. I however, would recommend if we're, if we have this case open in the first place, you know, extending the moratorium to a, a sufficient timeline where staff could tackle. timeline where staff could tackle them both, just so that we don't have another ULUC tax amendment kind of out there that we have to prioritize in the future. If that's something that the council would really like, I'd rather tackle them together with some sufficient...
I think we want the conditions updated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To make sure and not rush it through and talk about some of the things that the other cities are doing, so that when planning commission is making a recommendation, it's very clear if it meets the criteria or not.
Yeah. And so staff will talk to see what makes sense of what fits, can fit into schedules.
Jared, do we have any interested applicants trying to... At this point?
Besides the two that are already either, you know, permitted and not under construction or almost to the point of permitting, we do not have any other interested applicants at this point.
Great, thanks. City manager, you feel good with that direction?
Yes, our one certain, time-certain next step will be that we will bring the moratorium extension back to you in October.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, council, thank you, everyone, for that presentation and everything.
Absolutely, thank you.
Before we move on to resolution eighty-three, should we take a short break? All right, we'll be back in five minutes, recess. We're back. Item B in general business, resolution eighty-three, twenty-two-five, approving an agreement for Littleton Boulevard SubArea Planning Consultant Planning Services. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. This is a presentation of the project in agreement for our main long-range planning project for 2026. Council's heard about the project and the scope several times. And so therefore, I will turn it over directly to Adrian Burton, our Director of Major Projects, to lead off the presentation and introduce the rest of the team.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm Adrian Burton, Director of Major Projects. And I will be serving as the project director for the Littleton Boulevard SubArea Plan. So I'll be acting as the liaison between the project team, the city manager's office, and city council, providing strategic oversight, ensuring citywide alignment, and providing ongoing support to the project team. So we have a great project management team. Zareen will be our project manager. And she is bringing deep planning expertise and will lead the day-to-day operations, facilitate management of the consultant team, ensure the successful execution of all contract deliverables, and will serve as the primary city representative at all project-related meetings. And I will turn it over to Zareen now for the agenda.
Yeah. Thank you, Adrian. Good evening, council. I look forward to working with you all as project manager of this planning process. So we'll start the evening establishing a common understanding of what a subarea plan is and what the planning process will entail. We'll then provide an overview of the six focus areas we've identified for this project, highlight some expected deliverables at the end of the planning process, and wrap up with next steps.
So why now? This slide really sets the stage for why this planning effort is happening now and why it matters. First, this plan has been prioritized by city council and is a key initiative in the city's strategic plan, Horizon 2027. We have strong momentum. We have a dedicated cross-departmental team and the resources in place to move forward. Littleton Boulevard is one of our most iconic corridors with a rich collection of mid-century modern buildings. Preserving and enhancing that identity while planning for future needs is exactly why this work matters now. And over the past few years, we've laid the foundation through the historic context study, envision Littleton, the Unified Land Use Code, and Horizon 2027, as well as the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And tonight, we're ready to take the next step with the contract award.
So what is a subarea plan anyways? It's similar to a comprehensive plan in that it takes a multifaceted approach to examining an area. However, whereas a comp plan looks at a city overall, a subarea plan zooms in to analyze a specific subarea of that city. If you zoomed in another level, you might get a specific corridor plan that focuses on transportation. It'd be several more levels down before you get to a final design phase of a project that maybe was recommended to move forward in one of the higher-level phases. Therefore, the scope of this plan is not the same level as some plans you have reviewed recently, such as an infrastructure plan like Project Downtown, or a single topical plan, such as the Broadway Corridor Study, or the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan. The vision for the Littleton Boulevard SubArea Plan is to create a guiding document with prioritized regulatory strategies for historic preservation, land use, economic development, housing, transportation, and mobility, greens... And greenscape, sorry, green infrastructure and streetscape. That all work together to create a thriving corridor that balances preservation with progress. The eastern boundary will be the city limits past Littleton High School. The western boundary of the subarea will be the railroad tracks, providing some overlap with the boundaries of Project Downtown. The northern and southern boundaries will be decided during the initial phases of the planning process to ensure a context-sensitive transition from the commercial to residential uses in this area.
Mentioned it before, with the bike lanes that go along Shepherd in the south, so to extend that further south on that. And then also the eastern boundary there, the city does extend a little farther east in that blue line right there.
Thank you, mayor.
Just a half a block.
Yeah. We'll take that into account. Moving on. The overall planning process is anticipated to take eighteen to twenty-four months after project kickoff. Overarching throughout the entire process will be the project management task, where I work closely with our selected consultant team and internal project management team to ensure we are getting a plan that reflects the community's and city's needs, which is why we're also... We'll be working closely with our communications department on the communication and outreach task throughout the process as well. The beginning of the project will focus on data analysis. Then we'll move into visioning for the subarea, all of which will inform the recommendations. We plan to make periodic presentations to council to update you all on how it's going throughout. There will be multiple engagement opportunities throughout the process. We'll establish and meet periodically with a stakeholder working group, which will have a council representative on it. And the stakeholder working group will also participate in an urban design charrette. We'll establish an online presence with a project website, social media, and online surveys. We'll expect to also see us in person around town, at pop-up events, community open houses, focus group listening sessions, and one-on-one interviews.
I have a question. Do you think the end result will go as far as design guidelines or that's not part of the plan?
One of the expected deliverables that I'll highlight later on is a streetscape design guideline that we hope to get out of this project. We will also be utilizing the IAP2 spectrum of public participation to inform our public outreach efforts. This is something our communications director is certified in and that our consultant team has experience working with. Next, we'll highlight the six focus areas, starting with land use. We'll be really keeping that vision for this plan, balancing preservation with progress in mind when thinking about the zoning code changes that might be needed to support sensitive change on the corridor, understanding the potential opportunities for redevelopment while encouraging adaptive reuse and preservation. We anticipate some Unified Land Use Coast updates that result in focusing on building form and scale, frontage conditions, and transitional standards. In the historic preservation portion, we'll work to understand what changes have occurred in the corridor since that 2018 modern, commercial modernism study, with the goal to preserve and celebrate the unique character of the corridor while allowing for a context-sensitive new development. For housing, we're hoping to encourage a mix of housing options to include affordable and workforce housing, to ensure that the area remains inclusive and accessible to a diverse population. For transportation and mobility, we'll... We hope to enhance the transportation infrastructure in this area with the focus on multimodal options to improve connectivity. For streetscapes and green infrastructure, we hope to integrate green infrastructure and sustainable practices to enhance aesthetic appeal of the corridor while promoting environmental sustainability and resilience. For economic development, the goal here would be to ensure growth that stimulates economic activity and attracts investments. So speaking on the expected deliverables that I alluded to earlier, at the end, while we expect to have the final plan document with recommendations and implementation strategies, we also expect to have an existing conditions analysis report that will summarize all the data collection and analysis that is done early in the process, streetscape design guidelines for public realm design, and financial model of prospective public financing districts, to see if any of them make sense in this area to implement along the way. We hope to also receive those draft Unified Land Use Code Amendment language that we can immediately move forward into implementation and adoption... Sorry, adoption and then implementation. So looking forward, if council should approve the contract award, we hope to have a project kickoff in... we hope to have a project kickoff in October, next month, and then move forward with the existing conditions phase. We are setting out a long-term vision for this area with the subarea plan, and it's a long time coming. As Adrian mentioned before, it was highlighted in both Envision Littleton Comprehensive Plan, the Transportation Master Plan as a special corridor planning area. There are multiple outcomes in our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy linked to Littleton Boulevard. Council designated this plan as a priority in Horizon Littleton 2027 Strategic Plan. I'm excited to lead this major planning effort for the city of Littleton. Subarea plans don't happen often for communities of our size, so this is a really unique opportunity. Thank you, council, and I'm here for questions.
Council questions?
I'll fire away. We've done some studies on Littleton Corridor in the past. Over the last eight years, I can think of two. Are those being utilized at all? You know, once again, I think we're, we look at these studies, they sit on the shelf, and now we're doing another big study, and this one's not cheap at eight hundred seventy-two thousand. I don't think the other ones were nearly that comprehensive. But any idea where those plans are and are we utilizing those?
Yeah, we've done, I'll bring it back to kind of our timeline here. So we have done a couple of studies in recent years related to Littleton Boulevard, as you spoke about, Councilmember Driscoll. Some of them were very specific to certain areas, such as the Commercial Modernism Study. With this specific plan, we're hoping to take that multifaceted approach, take a more comprehensive look, and not just narrow down with such a specific focus on it. And many of them didn't have quite tangible implementation strategies. And one of our goals really with this plan is to think about strategies and suggestions that are implementable so we can move on to the next phase, which is why we are hoping to have that ULUC update as a really tangible next step, implementable. You know, council had a discussion about financing last week. That might be some of the recommendations. I'm, I'll turn to Adrian to maybe talk a little bit.
Did we waste time and money on these prior plans if we're not going to use it for, if they're not going to be considered?
Which prior plan are you talking about?
These prior plans are showing up right here, these prior studies and stuff like that. I mean, we put a lot of time and money into these other plans. I'm just...
I see the ULUC update and which one are you talking about specifically?
The Commercial Modernism Context Study.
Yeah, that was an audit of the buildings that were there.
Right, so that costs money. I get it. So we have spent some money on this corridor already. I'm just asking if we're going to, you know, if that's a lost cause or if we're actually able to use those, these existing plans in the current...
All of these plans will be taken in consideration. That's a big portion of the beginning of the study is an existing conditions analysis. And so we'll be looking back at the previous studies that have been done on the corridor, the most recent being that contact study from 2018. So we'll, again, we'll be taking all of those things into consideration. But as Zareen mentioned, we're really looking at that next phase of how we actually implement these things. And so we didn't necessarily have those strategies from previous planning efforts, and so it's taking that to that next level and then identifying those tools for what other plans are needed and that other diagram of the various levels of planning. So sometimes we have to go through those to get to that final design or that level of implementation. And this is just that next step for us.
Yeah, I just want the public to be aware that, you know, staff's time does cost money, you know. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is, you know, we spent some time on this corridor. You know, I'm in favor. I'm not trying to, you know, poo-poo it, but I'm just saying, we've spent some time, so it'll be nice to...
I think on that timeline, none of those things were specific to the corridor except for the Commercial Modernism Audit, and that was just an audit of the buildings that were in the corridor.
Well, if you go back one slide, yeah, there you go. So staff meets with historical preservation, okay? Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, all these things take time and money.
Right, but the SEDs is not specific to this corridor.
And I can add some context as well. I know many of these plans, Councilmember Driscoll, and to your point, have data analyses, for example, that are accompanied with those. I know specifically to the Economic Development Team, that's a sub for this contract, they will utilize that data that's already collected in those analyses and either add or enhance. So that work will not be redone as part of the scope.
Yeah, and that meeting with Historic Preservation and City Council was to get us to this point here. It wasn't a standalone plan. Councilmember Peters?
I have two questions. Could you speak a little bit to the comment we had earlier tonight about why we're focusing on this corridor as opposed to any of our other districts?
Because council told them to. That's the answer.
It's true.
You can say that. You can say that.
This was identified as a top priority through the strategic planning process. And so we are acting upon City Council's wishes to move forward with the subarea plan on Littleton Boulevard.
I can add as well. It is nice alignment with what we are seeing in the market from interest from investors, a lot of properties looking to continue the catalytic growth that the corridor is seeing. And so we are addressing that current state with our ad hoc services that are underway currently. But kicking off this work in parallel just helps us make sure that we're in lockstep with what that future long-term vision should be.
And then could you say anything more about how the stakeholder group would look like that gets to be a part of this? Because I know I'll get that question from...
Yeah, so we, if approved, we'll start work on reaching out to the community for the stakeholder group. We do envision having a representative from council, from our various boards and commissions, such as Planning Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, just like different boards and commissions, having a rep from there, having a rep from different organizations throughout the area that surrounds Littleton Boulevard. We're always welcome to recommendations for people to take part in the stakeholder group, but we'll also have some focus listening sessions. Focus group listening sessions cater towards, let's say, just residents or just property or businesses along the Boulevard. So it's a little more of a tailored conversation in case someone is not able to participate in the stakeholder working group. So that kind of, let me pull it up. So really, the project engagement opportunities, we're thinking of different ideas, just multiple people can get involved in multiple avenues if they're not, let's say, able to take part in one.
We're looking for an intentional process to where there are feedback loops that really make sense in the milestones of the project. And so people really understand how their feedback is being utilized throughout the process, and it doesn't feel ad hoc. They can actually see it being applied. And so the way that we'll design those stakeholder working groups will be really important, and we want to make sure that that's conveyed. And again, people understand how their time is being used, how that feedback is being used in the plan, and that we can capture that and share that back to the public.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem? I think that's, I think you're good to do that.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 83-2025, approving a professional service agreement between the city of Littleton and Dig Studios for consulting planning services on Littleton Boulevard SubArea Plan Project.
There was a second by Councilmember Peters. The screens were all flashing at us here. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 83. Council, any further discussion? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, actually, I thought Councilmember Peters' comment about like why this project, why right now, and actually to, you know, to Patrick's comment as well, like, you know, I think we have been kind of building up towards something. And I think doing something of greater depth when the opportunity is ripe, and also, Councilmember Grove, to like not lose historic, you know, preservation opportunities while we have them, while it is in the midst of this economic churn, it is a good idea to focus on depth at this point. So I think we made the right choice when we gave this direction. Glad to know that you're shaking your heads yes, because we're at the point of approving a contract, but I feel confident that this was the right choice to make. So thanks for all your guys' work.
Councilmember Grove?
You've heard me say this before, but I make a plea why we're doing this, that as new businesses want to come to the corridor, whatever, that they are made aware of what we were doing and what we're trying to preserve and, you know, keep in the spirit of it, because it's going to be a couple of years before we're going to get design guidelines, so.
Yeah, and we wanted to recommend potentially a couple of different policy tools, a vision document that we could, that could be adopted, that could help guide that. So no project is being evaluated outside of the context of this plan. As applications are coming in, that can really help provide, again, additional direction that this corridor is going through an active planning process, and that council requests that the projects take the draft plan into account.
So the vision policy process could come earlier than the two years.
Right.
That would be perfect, yes. Thank you very much. That would be great.
Can I ask just one more question, just for transparency to the public? This is not a small contract, and that's why it's in front of council over five hundred thousand. At eight hundred seventy-two thousand, how many, who all replied to the RFP? And I looked at Dig Studios' process, very impressive, and also their breakdown on their costs and stuff like that. So I just want to hear a little bit about how that was, how they were deciding.
Yeah, so we went through a competitive request for proposal process through the city's procurement system, in which we made advertisement to the public, solicited companies to submit their proposals. We received nine proposals in total. We had an interdepartmental team that evaluated the proposals. This consisted of staff from different departments that represent the different focus areas. For example, Rachel participated in the interview process. So the ones, we ended up selecting four teams from those nine to move on to that interview process. And then we interviewed all four in person, and of those, Dig was selected as the final winner. And I will say, I know Councilmember Barr asked about this during the study session, but we did have submissions from some national, like outside of the Denver metro area, firms that submitted as well as local. The Dig team is local to the Denver metro area, though, so that kind of worked out at the end. But we did have some national firms that applied as well, and that we interviewed as well, just to give that opportunity.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 83. No further comments. I'm going to open the voting.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Next up, we're going to have a little kind of discussion on local partnership funding and stadium district funding. Is Deputy City Manager going to kind of talk about this a little bit here briefly?
I'll just give a real quick, yeah, I will just introduce. Our Deputy City Manager, Mike Gent, has been working closely with really our project manager in the City Manager's Office, Executive Assistant Lucy Lucero, preparing this year's grant process for council. And last year, council requested a study session format, although this isn't a regular meeting, to talk a little bit about priorities and how you might do it. So we asked Mike to just give an overview of this year's process and then tee up any conversation council might want to have. Mike?
To spark Councilmember Recker's memory, it was his.
He reminded me that.
So Lucy will be sitting out here shortly in the next few days. The applications received for this year's, both the local partnership funding grants as well as the city and district funding grants. At the time last year, we came together to actually discuss the individual ratings and collectively aggregate them together and make the award recommendations. Councilmember Recker had said it sure would be nice if our council could talk about our city and council priorities before we rank the applications. And so tonight gives you the chance to talk about that. Just to give you a little bit of primer for the conversation, I wanted to remind you of the grants that were awarded for this current year. The local partnership funding for 2025 was spread out over two slides here. There was twenty-three awards given totaling sixty-nine thousand seven hundred. Twelve of those awards were in the human services category. Five of those awards were in the community events category, and six were, we called the other category. This year, with the stadium district funding, there were fifteen awards totaling three hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, including, you heard tonight from a child's song, she had said that they'd come through the arts and culture grants, but it's actually through the stadium district grants. So this year, we've received thirty applications for the local partnership funding. There's seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars budgeted for that grant process. The thirty applications are asking for a total of two hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Eleven fall under that human services category, six under community events, and thirteen under other. Stadium district funding, about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars is available. I say about a hundred and eleven thousands because when we receive those funds, they're in an interest-earning account, and so it continues to earn interest until we disperse those funds in January. Nineteen applications were received this year, asking for about four hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred. I'm happy to turn it over to you for conversation.
So yeah, council, I need discussion about kind of when we look at these, I think, you know, I'll let Councilmember Recker to lead the discussion there if there's anything that you wanted to get from council about how we go about doing these things, what people look at.
Well, my memory is that there was, I had kind of questions about funding, you know, what are our priorities? We're funding other public agencies within the area, and what were our, how did we think about funding to Littleton Public Schools? And kind of different requests from within the schools, and, you know, just kind of what were our feelings about that. Jim, or Jim? Mike, can you kind of go back to the, I think, the one where, I think it was a stadium funding? You know, so we had a bunch of different requests from LPS, and they ranged in size from three hundred dollars to, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. And is there any kind of parameters we want to put on ourselves as just thinking about how to do that? Well, aren't these funds done after?
The stadium funds is the, well, I mean, we still have, so just, well, there's the two different things. This is one of the stadium funds. We have, what, you said a hundred and eleven thousand? We saved that hundred and eleven thousand last year. I mean, in theory, we could continue to not spend it all and go out next year, but I would assume that it's my intention that we kind of use those a hundred and eleven thousand dollars this year, since we have ample request.
Four dollars in requests for every one dollar of available funding.
Well, and I'd like to, not to disregard what you're saying, but I also like to throw something else out. This will be my sixth time I've done this. And every council member does it from a different perspective. Some award, and we use an average, so some award larger amounts of money to fewer organizations. And then I kind of took the approach of a little bit to everybody with more money to the people that are feeding people. But should we think about an approach that's uniform, or should we do something on our own? It's just, when we get the results, it's just all over the board when I go, well, why did they not award them money, and why did they award this so much? I mean, I just, it's hard to know what the rationale is. And I'm not saying my fellow council members have rationale that's wrong. It's just I don't understand.
And Mike, can you confirm that, I think, so the way we've done it is if four council members want to fund one of it, then it's the average of those funds?
That is the approach we took.
Okay, and so, yeah. And I think, you know, to your point of view, I, you know, I look at kind of what would do the greatest good for the most people there. And also, I think if, for someone that doesn't, you know, grants and application like that is, if you're applying for something, I try to give them as much as I can, because if you're applying for that, it's because you need that money to do whatever it is. And I think spread a little bit all over there makes it even harder for everyone to accomplish their goals rather than let a few of them do it that way. But at the same time, you know, some of these small ones, you know, like the chess club there for three hundred dollars, I think that's, you know, something that's small but can go a long way for just those people there, so.
Well, and you bring a good point. Some of the funds can benefit a small number of people. Well, and you bring a good point. Some of the funds can benefit a small number of people, but are people maybe that are in great need, like a domestic shelter or something. And others can, you know, like a couple thousand dollars can benefit many, many people, even thousands, you know, depending on what the program is. So I I look at that too, but I just, I don't know. It it just seems like we each have our own decision making and maybe that's fine. I I just, the rationale is sometimes hard to figure.
This feels harder than ever to me and it was really overwhelming last year, having not had any sort of conversation about it. It's interesting to see how much we gave to different groups. And I guess I feel like since the pot is getting smaller and I think a lot of groups probably lost funding this year that they need, um, I'm, I appreciate having this conversation. Is there a way or have we talked about pulling out groups that we already support, like on a line item for other things?
Yeah, and and so when when you receive the packets to be rate, we will show you every application received. But we will have some notes on there, such as um the council gave us direction that they didn't want to award an applicant in more than one pot of funds. Um, so if an applicant that applied for arts and culture grant funds also applied in one of these, you'll see the application, but we'll note that the Arts and Culture Board recommended funding, so you'll have that with it. And then applicants that applied for us to sponsor a table at their their fundraiser or or other events, um, we're gonna put a note on there saying we have funds for this in the council outreach, you know, uh, budget. And so again, you could choose not to allow those to compete for funds in this because we have another funding source for them. Um, and then certainly you could decide, you know, I think Council Riker's point is is really valid. How do we want to support certain, like our other public agencies, like the school district or the LDDA or, you know, whatnot? And you can decide to include them or not. Those are all things that that are, there are certainly options for you.
So we'll be clear with the instructions when you you see it. But I think Mike's thought, we've observed that several organizations who are applying for funding are among the organizations that we do sponsor tables and other and other events with. Um, I think we may not have been clear in the past about how those organizations should apply for that or have that conversation with us. We think that, you know, we we might be able to take those those requests kind of off of the list of re- of re- of uh of the requests. For instance, the LPS Spirit uh event is something that the city has traditionally done. We think that that's something we can confirm with them, that that would be um affordable within the the line item in the council's budget for outreach. That's where we fund all of these tables. So that's one thing that we could, if if we get heads nodding tonight, take off your list effectively, even though you'll see the applications, so that you you don't have to factor those into your prioritizing. We'll plan to f- to fund those per our our historical patterns through the budget. That's one thing we'd like your.
Does that work? Or at least have a question, do you want to fund this through the council outreach budget and right there? Because there maybe, maybe there's a table that we don't, I don't know, some organization that says, hey, we can say, eh, maybe not this one, but at least give us, we can have it separate from the uh local partnership funding, but um, okay. Does that work for council?
Seeing heads nod, so we'll, we'll go that way.
Yeah, and I think it's kind of hard to explain, you know, priorities and what you look for. I would actually see in the applications there as well, um, that come forward, so, but. Does anyone have any kind of other questions or, because we'll be getting this?
October 14th.
October 14th, so we'll be getting the.
Oh, in the next couple of days.
In the next couple of days and then our uh individual um responses are due back before then. And then we'll have a discussion on October 14th.
Yes.
Great. Everyone feel good?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, on to item 10, ordinances on second reading and public hearing. We have one tonight. We're gonna go to ordinance 15, 2025 ordinance on second reading adopting changes to the Unified Land Use Code regarding plating, notice of mailings and other miscellaneous non-housing related changes. So we'll have uh staff come on up for the presentation and we'll, um, as this is an ordinance on second reading, we'll go through the presentation, council has questions, uh, then we'll have a public hearing. Um, and then we can do a motion and second and a vote. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, for that well timed, in, well timed introduction there. I'm going to turn this over directly to Jared Chipman, our planning manager, to start this off. And now I see he's seated, so I'll stop talking.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, before you this evening are a few items that we've talked about previously. Um, we ended up originally having them coupled together with items that were going before you for a compliance with state regulations. However, we broke them off as uh the state regulation uh compliance items needed more uh more in-depth review by staff. And so uh these were uh put on the agenda later and therefore they're before you this evening. So um Senior Planner Andrea Vaughn has been working on this item and has the following presentation. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, council. So tonight we will be discussing proposed ULUC amendments as they relate to process improvements. Um, and these are related very specifically to two of our processes, which is plating, um, the process and review of plating and then the notice of mailing that staff sends out for uh neighborhood meetings and public hearings. And we'll be providing a bit of background information on both of these as well, as we know that these items don't often reach council. I first tonight wanted to start off by kind of highlighting what it is that's grounding staff's work in this. Uh, process improvements is not necessarily uh something that's very exciting to a lot of people, but it is something that excites staff. Like I said, it excites staff, it shouldn't excite anybody else. Um, but it does, uh, we like to find ways to really uh better the services that we offer, not just our applicants, but our residents as well. Uh, and so staff has found that we could increase uh the quality of governance that we are providing here with the city of Littleton um through several items. The first is creating clarity through clear and concise code language, um, so that everybody is clear on what we are asking of them and we are clear what the code is asking of us. The reduction of duplicate, duplicative processes and streamlining processes to reduce staff review time while still maintaining city standards. So first tonight, I wanted to dive into uh just some background education on plating before we discuss the proposed text amendments. Plating is kind of a, one of those behind the scenes real estate processes that, again, does, most people are not interacting with. Uh, but simply put, plating is the division of real estate. And here at the city, the, it often falls into two categories. Um, the parcel division, which is the creation of one or more lots, uh, from new lots from the subdivision of an existing lot. And then we have condo plating, that is the division of a building and creates common owned property of the parcel. I wanted to just clarify, we hear a lot about condos at the city. Um, we hear a lot about permitting more condos. I wanted to be clear that condos are not a building type. It's an ownership structure. There are often certain building types that are more more associated with condo ownership. Uh, but tonight we will not be discussing any sort of building types. Uh, this is really just about ownership structures.
I have a question. I'm, if you can go back one slide. I'm not real clear. So you have a lot and this is going to subdivide it into two lots?
You could take, and we'll kind of, I, we do have um some standards according to a zone district for um lot standards. So if you have a lot that is, let's say, twice the size of what the minimum lot size is, then you could create two lots, assuming it meets all standards. Uh, staff does not want to take a look at those standards. We just really want to take a look at our review processes. Again, to kind of create some streamlined as well as looking at some code language to create some clarity within the code. Um, but we aren't looking at um amending any sort of standards for review.
Where are these lots? I mean, I hate to mention it, but we have a huge issue about density and this looks like additional density and I think I'm wrong.
Yeah, so uh to answer your question, this uh proposal is, so we're not looking at changing how a parcel is subdivided. What we're looking at, and I think actually the next slide will be beneficial. Be because we're looking at, um, let's just say that you're taking an existing development. We're looking at how it is owned. So if you have a multifamily building and you want to sell off units, condo units, right? That, we still look at it from the perspective of, does it meet the bulk standards of the ULUC? Right? So we're looking at from setbacks, height, all of those things, none of that changes. What does change is um the invisible lines within the building that indicate you can purchase this portion of the building or or you're renting it and therefore there are no invisible lines within the building. It's all one parcel. So that's kind of what we're talking about. I do think Andrea's next slide um uh might might be beneficial to this conversation.
I certainly hope so, but I do apologize. This is a bit of a crude graphic. There's a lot of explanation I have on this page uh in front of me here, but we thought it was a kind of good example of uh these ownership structures of a simple lot division or a simple parcel uh owned by one person versus maybe a condo plat which is owned by two. So on the right, uh, in the purple indicates owners, the purple indicates ownership. Um, and on the right, we have two lots, each with two uh units on them. However, each lot is only owned by one entity or one person. On the left, we have two uh, two units with two owners, but located on one lot. And that's a condo div- that's the condo plat. Uh, and in the green, you have common ownership. Um, but the lot sizes are about the same. The buildings go through the same review process. It's the plating, it's that ownership structure uh that creates a difference. And I'm happy to take questions if we have any on this slide, um, just because I know it's, again, the understanding of the plating process can.
So the one on the left is not taking, those are two separate units already.
Those are two separate units.
So it's not taking one unit and making it two. It's taking two units and making it easy for ownership purposes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we also just wanted to touch on review. So what staff is reviewing of when we do see um plating applications come in, but also um applications for new buildings, things that we look at also through site plan. Um, so on the right, there's an example of the CM Zone District stand- Lot and Building Standards. Um, all of these standards must be met in order to uh create a new parcel as well as to build a, built, uh, to create a new building on these parcel. The setbacks must be met. Um, and so staff does review this for compliance. Again, we do this at a variety of stages. We do it. Uh, sometimes in plating, on occasion applicants will include buildings on the plat, although it's not always necessary. Uh, we look at it through site planning processes and we look at it, uh, by the time it gets the building permit. So there are at least three opportunity, or typically three opportunities that staff has to look uh for conformance for these. And again, staff is not looking to propose uh amending any law or building standards in any of our zone districts. So it's not necessary, so we aren't looking at being able to create smaller lots in order to create more housing. Our review processes are, uh, can be divided up into two. We have admin plots that do not require public hearing. We have several plating application types that fall into that. Those are condo plots, subdivisions of four or fewer lots, plots without right of way dedication, lot line adjustments or lot consolidations. Uh, those are simply if you wanted to sell off part of your property to maybe a neighbor that's looking to absorb some. We would still review, we review those to ensure we do still have those lot standards uh that are being met. And then a consolidation is if you purchase uh one or more lots and you would like to kind of have that absorbed into your primary lot. Um, we see that sometimes with larger developments, but also owners, uh, property owners that maybe have a vacant parcel uh that they own adjacent to their property uh for tax purposes. Those are all reviewed administratively by staff. Uh, and then we have a preliminary plots that do go through public hearing at Planning Commission. The criteria for those uh is really just subdivisions of five or more lots and plots that do have right of way dedication. Moving into the ULUC text amendment proposals, um, staff went into this with the intent of, again, looking to provide clarity in the code wherever possible and streamlining those processes, again, while still maintaining city of Littleton standards. The first uh text amendment proposal is to update the criteria in order to minimize the need for conditional approval of uh preliminary plots. We've had these on occasion, uh, just where the language makes a little bit unclear uh what uh the language means for future development. So we have just introduced language, um, creating a little bit more concise language in the criteria for zoning rather than listing out which zoning um requirements must be met, just simply stating that zoning requirements for the district in which they are located in. And creating uh just a little bit of new language in these standards and specifications, stating that any new loss and their subsequent development standards conform to the design and improvement standards found in the newly adopted Littleton engineering standards. The second proposal here is to streamline the planning process by removing condo plots from city review and instead allowing applicants to just file directly with the county. Again, city staff is reviewing um any new buildings for zoning conformance at the time of site plan and building permit. Um, any new, any new buildings uh that are looking to maybe divide up that internal structure or that internal ownership uh would still be reviewed by planning. And if there was, if there were any proposals to uh for interior or exterior uh work on an existing building, staff would s- would see that then. But condo plots are hyper legal and specific documents. That staff simply does not have the specialty to review. And instead, rem- removing condo plots uh frees up our city attorney's time, it frees up staff's time uh to, and allows us to reallocate that time to uh for things that we think are better worth our time uh being able to give more time to other projects. And finally, in streamlining the plating process, staff is uh recommending uh amending the preliminary plat criteria to remove projects that have right of way dedications when the dedication has been contemplated in a city adopted document. Uh, staff does find that uh this process is relatively duplicative, where we have documents such as the transportation master plan that goes through rigorous review and an adoption process of with city council to then send applicants back through a review at Planning Commission in order to be approved. It allows us to also be more nimble in order to meet our goals. Uh, I think one of our better examples of this is we worked in partnership with Little Raven uh in the last year or so um in order to gain some right of way dedication. We had to go through the preliminary plat process. Uh, we approached Little Raven in order to uh, in order to gain that right of way, which I believe was for one of our safer streets programs. Um, so just al- allowing this to, this one criteria to be moved into administrative plat would allow for staff to be able to move more quickly on city goals. And that wraps up the plating uh proposals. Next, we have notice of mailing. Um, and this is simply just the process in which postcards are sent out um from the city to uh to neighbors for certain proposals uh for development. So we wanted to just run through the process here. Um, staff currently does generate these mailing addresses for residents and property owners that are located within a seven hut, 700 foot ra- radius from each corner of the subject property. Um, staff then works with our communication staff to generate the postcards uh and those are required to be put out in the mail 10 days prior to meeting. Staff is not looking to amend any of these. Instead, staff is looking to reduce some code conflicts and provide flexibility for who is providing notice. So in the code, we do have conflicting language where it states that for neighborhood meetings, the applicant shall provide written notice. However, when you go to the notice by mail uh portion of the code, it does actually state that city staff is responsible for. that city staff is responsible for creating and mailing the notices. Our process for working with applicants in order to generate these is typically about three weeks, which is work that we are happy to do. However, we have also heard from some applicants that, you know, if we were able to work with them, provide them the mailings, the addresses, the template, and work with them to develop that certified mail, that they might be able to meet those timelines a little bit faster. So what staff has done here is just simply remove who is responsible for providing the mailing and instead just keep those standards for that process. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council approve ordinance 152025 and I am available for questions if there are any.
Counsel, any questions?
I don't know what to ask. I don't know if that condo plating was, you simplified or complicated, I'm not so sure.
Fair, that is...
Does everybody understand it? I didn't quite get it.
If I can offer, from a non-planner, you know, it really helps me to understand it when, with the distinction that was made about ownership versus the land use. If you think about why the county is involved, the county has assessor interests, all the legal kind of property interests to make sure are right there. Those are, that's really more the county's interest. So in terms of the ownership questions and making sure that that's right, currently both the city and the county are involved and we don't see that we add more value in that process. So it helps to streamline the process for applicants, it's one more thing we can do to make that our staff, make sure our staff is focused on the value-added work by still coordinating with the county, but taking ourselves out of the approval process, is that fair?
This doesn't really go with land use or any of the standards with land use, but it's more with the assessors at the county, so.
Yeah, so the county is reviewing the documents. The image that was shared, I know the coloration was a little challenging, but the three parcels on that image were all duplexes. So the two to the right were duplexes that were under a single ownership, so most likely either somebody was living in one and renting the other, or maybe they're renting both. Whereas the one next door that had the green area surrounding it, that was a common area. And then it had two, it had been condoized so that you had the ability for ownership of either side of the duplex with a party wall green, et cetera. So that's, that's really kind of how that, that functions, is not so much, you know, we're still going to look at, does that duplex fit on that lot? You know, all of those standards, the county would take into account and review that, those legal requirements as to how the taxes get altered or divvied up, et cetera.
Councilmember Rickert.
So I agree with Councilwoman Driscoll, it's a little bit confusing, but I think the confusing part for me is that I'm not sure I have a clear understanding of the process. And so it appears to me that the current process is if someone wants to create a condo, they have to get the plating reviewed by both us and the county? And then the records for that plating reside in both places or just the county? So they already just reside in the county?
They would be recorded documents with the county.
For the county. And so what we're doing is just taking ourselves out of that process since the county already does it. And I think that, the issue is, the ownership part is confusing, but the process part was also a little unclear to me. So thank you for, I was confused as well.
Any other questions? All right, well, since this is an ordinance on second reading, we'll open the public comment portion at 9:23. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak? Come on up. Everyone in the audience would like to speak tonight.
I can't speak on behalf of anybody else, but, and I didn't pay enough attention to this recently and I don't have my old notes. What I want to know is who benefits and who suffers from this? And I think the, the results to neighbors are very unclear. In the case of multiple ownership, these are by definition going to be HOAs. And then for the common area, there's always going to be some kind of land maintenance company or something like that. The individuals are not going to care for it themselves, there's going to be some kind of company. And I'm going to say as a neighbor to those two different things, my experience is very different. And I see nothing in staff's presentation that defines how somebody has to live with this for 30 years. If your next-door neighbor is several people with different kinds of upkeep, or one person who's kind of a jerk and doesn't hire people who take care of the property, those could be miserable experiences in a neighborhood. I also want to mention the right-of-way, I mean, I think some people were upset by the Little Raven lack of, I mean, they thought the right-of-way was important to them. And so the benefit of the city taking part in these is that the public is aware and notified. And the problem with administrative approval is the public never knows, the neighbors never know, and I'm concerned about that. When it's more dense down here, like I say, it's a different experience with different neighbors. Now, I don't have horror stories, but, well, actually, you know, maybe I do. But I think this affects the neighbors short and long-term. And it also, the experience of being in an HOA and living one of these, I know some people are very, very unhappy with the HOAs and they turn over, they turn over. I don't know if you noticed, I mean, right on Prince Street, you'll see these rafts of Forstale signs. And I, you know, don't have all the specific stories of folks, but I know they left for a reason. And there's issues about the one that's, there's a ten-plex, five are in an HOA and five are separately owned. And there is a turnover in some of them. So the impact is to me, to the neighbors and the neighborhood, and then the owners who have an unsatisfactory experience. There's also the condo defect thing, which has been misery for a couple of, at least a couple of places, Steeplechase and Nevada Place. I think noticing this to the public has inherent value that we lose by making this administrative approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Pam? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 9:26 since there is no one else in the audience. Counsel, any further comments or discussions or would someone like to make a motion?
I want to make a comment.
Let's, let's make a comments after a motion. Anybody want to, or just?
I move we approve ordinance 152025 and ordinance in second reading adopting changes to the Unified Land Use Code ULUC regarding plating, notice of mailings, and other miscellaneous non-housing-related changes.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 15. Counsel, any further discussion? Councilmember Grove?
We've heard from many citizens that the 700-foot radius is not large enough, especially when you're on a corner like the Enzer property where there's not that many houses. I know it's the best practice, what is typically used by other jurisdictions, but I am hoping that one day we can broaden that because our citizens have a whole lot of interest in what's going on, maybe not quite adjacent to where they are. I know we have the Dow, but it's not real user-friendly and it's hard to kind of sometimes figure out what's going on and to pinpoint what, what street the little dot is on so that you can enlarge it and all that stuff. So just something to think about for the future.
Councilmember Rickert?
I would like to second Councilwoman Grove's call for a conversation amongst the council on the radius that we use for that. I think we should have a conversation about expanding that. And then I would also like to say thank you, I think, for this work. I think in particular, you know, any barrier we can reduce to building, creating condos in our community, I think is a positive thing. I think we, I think that hopefully will just support more past ownership for real estate and so I appreciate the work.
Councilmember Peters?
I did send this to a couple people in the city who have gone through this process because it was a little bit over my head as well. And their only feedback was on that communication postcard, maybe you already do this, if there could be a QR code that takes you to that part on the DAL that just would make it, you know, lower barrier to anybody interacting with that, and that maybe you already do that, but.
So just, if I can give one perspective on the DAL, we're very aware of the challenges of that, and we're working with our GIS team to currently update that and provide modifications. A lot of data on the backend that needs to be fixed on that, so we're actively working on, hoping to have a solution to that later this year, if possible, early next year.
I guess more broadly, anything that you could just scan on that postcard when it comes to your house and say, you know, just make it a little easier to access information about it, whether it's on the DAL or an improved site?
We can reach out to communication to have that discussion. The limited knowledge I have on, on QR codes is that we might have a limited number that we're able to utilize without maybe paying for more. So I don't want to give you a full answer at this point in time, I'd rather do a little research on that.
Mayor Protem, did you have comments? No? Any other? All right. Well, we do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 15 on second reading here. No further discussion, I'm going to open the voting.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you, thank you for the, thank you for the presentation and the next item of business is 11 adjourned. Before adjourned, Councilmember Rickert would like to say something.
I just want to announce, I should have made during my comments that myself and Councilman Zink will be holding a county, a community meeting on Saturday, the 27th, at Bemis Library at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thanks. No further business, we are adjourned at 9:31.